Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 4:00 PM on the dot, December 14th, 2020. This is a regular meeting of the Stewart City Commission. Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Meyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Bruner.
Yeah.
Commissioner Matheson.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Would everyone please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and fair and just and moral.
Our first order of business this evening is our arts moment, an acoustic instrumental music performance by Flynn.
That's me.
Take it away, sir.
So, I, this is an instrumental lube that I wrote. It's an original piece of music. It's called "There With You", and it is basically about the difficult times that we're in now that we're just not always able to be with the people that we want to be with. So, if you can take something away from that, it's just an instrumental piece. I hope you like it. I bet. I'm nervous. Sorry about that.
I don't know if anyone's seen the hit Netflix show Bloodline, but you could write the soundtrack for that. Incredible. Now that we're all blissed out.
If we could keep him for background music for the rest of the night.
Wow. Yeah, great for a long meeting today. Thank you. While the setup is being dismantled, we have a bit of housekeeping, some important housekeeping work that we're doing this evening at our meeting. Our first major piece is the selection of the mayor and the vice mayor. We have a long meeting ahead of us, so I've tried my best to whittle down my tome, epic tome of a speech. And I would just like to say to my colleagues up on this board, this has been quite a year.
Oh, yeah.
None of us anticipated. And I'm so proud to sit up here alongside you all as your colleague and honorably as the mayor of this city. Despite all of the challenges, I thank you all for your support and for your hard work. I thank all of you, our citizens, who have stuck through it with us, who have been gracious and lenient with us as we've navigated these challenges despite so much difficulty. I'd like to thank staff, leadership, staff leadership for the incessant phone calls by yours truly, and I'm sure my colleagues at all hours of the night and on weekends, asking questions, asking for updates. The staff that are not here today, out fixing the trucks and weeding and making sure our water is clean and healthy, picking up our trash, bookkeeping, legislating, doing legislative affairs. All of you make my job easy, and so I couldn't do it without you. And I cannot wait to pass the mantle on to the next person. So, it is with a heavy heart, but also one that will be lightened tremendously in a few moments, that I pass this along with so much gratitude and love and thanks for you all.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on to the actual item, we at the city would like to recognize you and your efforts over this past year. As you know, first-time mayors receive a tree in Mayor's Park, so staff will be working on you with your tree dedication for that. As well, you might not know, yesterday was Mayor Meyer's birthday, so we got a little card there. And then, and then staff also always gives the outgoing mayor for their work over the past year a gift, which we would like for you to open.
Here?
Sure, right here. Oh, boy.
Hope you like it.
I'd be a Tiffany piece down here.
Jeez, I know, it's heavy. Oh, my goodness.
You bang that gavel so hard during your mayorship, we wanted to make sure you had one at home, so there's waiting.
How wonderful.
Very nice.
Can I indulge you real quick here? Want to make sure it's documented. Want to get that gavel out, Mayor?
One in each hand. Let, yeah, let's get it right. Let's do it right.
Okay, you can be perfect. Thank you.
Good judge.
Oh, boy, thank you all. It's very kind. Okay, before we move into the meat of the selection, every year, it's only been two for me so far, but it seems that there's always a little bit of musical chairs that goes on when we do this. And to make it a little more efficient, perhaps what we should do is select our mayor, and before anyone moves, pass the gavel. And then, when we select the vice mayor, we can adjust our seating arrangement accordingly, rather than moving twice. How does everyone feel about that?
Agreed.
Great. So, when we select the mayor, I'll move the gavel, and then after we select the vice mayor, the mayor shall sit here, and vice mayor to the mayor's left, and then I'll move right yonder, and we'll figure out the rest. Okay? So, do I hear a nomination?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It has been the tradition of the city of Stewart to nominate the vice mayor for mayor. I nominate Yula Clark for mayor. I nominate Yula Clark as mayor of Stewart.
I will second Commissioner McDonald's motion nominating Vice Mayor Clark, former mayor.
We have a nomination by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Commissioner Matheson for the nomination of Vice Mayor Clark to be mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Mayor.
They seated, they seated, pass of the gavel.
Oh, I'm going to stay here or?
Just for this next vote.
Okay, I'm going to take up 10 minutes and call the meeting to order.
I just want to say a short thank you, and then I'll move on to selection of our vice mayor.
Madam Mayor, if I may make a nomination, Merritt Matheson, Commissioner Matheson is vice mayor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for Commissioner Merritt Matheson to be the vice mayor of the city of Stewart. Everybody, there's a most, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, Merritt Matheson. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So.
Little switcheroo.
Merritt, you have all your equipment there. Are you going to move or?
Yeah, I'm going to have the professional.
No, he can do it.
I'm going to the end.
Yeah.
You can take your mask.
I have some.
Four minutes in between.
You can do that here. You can do that out there. You can do it here.
These are for you. When the music starts, you got to be seated. Doesn't help that we got all this luggage underneath here.
Commissioner, welcome to the end of the table.
Okay, thank you.
What do you else can do this better?
Thank you so much. We'll just move forward, and I think that both Vice Mayor and myself will have comments when we get to the comments by commissioners. But at this time, I just want to thank our commissioners who selected us, and we look forward to continuing to serve the city of Stewart during this new year coming up of 2021, and we appreciate everything. The next item on the agenda are proclamations and our presentations. We have no proclamations today, so we'll just move forward with our presentation with your first service award for December 2020. Mr. Peters?
That would not be me.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That would be Mr. Dyes.
This is actually, the mayor would be doing the two tenure.
I'm going to go down on a little bit. Let me make sure that I have our five-year first. Okay, that's good. Let me just open this up here so I can get Mr. DeFranck and Mr., I think I'm just going to stay down for both of them. So. First, we have for five years of service with our police department, Jordan Gross. Our police department, Jordan Gross. You're going to be calling? We'll, we'll save it. Okay.
I'll take it or, I'll take it for him.
Better not steal the goodies out. 10% delivery fee.
And this is really, really something. In our technology services, Michael DeFranck, 20 years of service.
One minute of speech for every year.
No speech?
You can barely get Mike to say hi.
Okay. Before we go on to the employee of the month, the department that's presenting has been presenting, as far as I know, for the past few months. They've really done a lot, public works, the whole department, all of its different areas and branches. And the head of that department is going to be leaving us soon, and we had a going away for him, and we just want to appreciate it. This is probably one of the last times that we're going to have you present on behalf of your department, so we thank you, Dave Peters.
The mayor and I are going on an extended vacation, or the past, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, this is my last opportunity to recognize a member of the utilities and engineering department for their dedication and commitment to the overall success of the department. This election was important to me in that we've had an opportunity to present and nominate a number of deserving candidates over the years, and I thought it would be appropriate to nominate another member of the department that represents the core values of what we and the utilities and engineering department firmly believe in. The nominee was born and raised in Stewart, attended J.D. Parker Elementary School, Stewart Middle School, and Martin County High School. At a very young age, the nominee was a junior recreation aide at the Flagler Rec Center, and after graduating from high school, began his career with the city of Stewart Stewart in the turf and grounds team of the Public Works Department. His brother, Mike Marshall, works at the water reclamation facility as a wastewater treatment team specialist, and his mother, Maddie, has worked at the East Stewart Community Center for years. From the turf and grounds team as Labor One in 1999 to his current position as a Class C water treatment plant operator, the nominee has consistently received outstanding annual evaluations from his supervisors. In 2012, the nominee was one of our original grinder system installers, and his work efforts set forth the high standards that continue today. In 2015, our nominee became the city's first water treatment plant operator training. Since then, he's received a C license in water treatment from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and is working towards his B license. I'm extremely proud of his professional development here in the city, and I believe he represents the best of who we are. Not once have I heard him complain about anything, and God knows, there were a number of opportunities for him to do so in the early stages of the septic-to-sewer conversion program, and he had a right to do so. Always willing to accept new challenges, the nominee exemplifies the city's values by treating others with honesty, dignity, consideration, and respect. I'm proud to represent the utilities and engineering department and ask that one of our own, Mr. Marvin Dial, come forward and be recognized once again as the city of Stewart's Employee of the Month for December 2020.
Talking about Dave Peters?
Definition of pay is quite quirky, but.
All of Mr. Dial's family has probably worked with the city's mother.
Oh, yeah, 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 back to get a picture.
It's a family business.
I'm a husband with the city.
It's crazy.
Walk by that microphone without saying something.
Thank you so much and congratulations, and keep up the good work. Our next presentation will be regarding the 2021 calendar photo contest. We usually have a bunch of these outside, but this is our photo, and I think we have a lot of the calendar winners if they're here, but we're going to be calling out their names. Is that it, city manager?
Yep. Is Ms. Ellig taking the item?
Our cover photo, Anne, you're going to do it?
No, I am.
Leanne's going to take it.
Okay, go on. Hello, I'm Leanne Jones, Division Assistant here at the city, Anne Eleg, with recycling and conservation. We both have worked really hard on this calendar for several years now. So, the calendar started about 14 years ago. The first one was published in 2007, and it was entitled "Creating a Healthy River Day by Day." This year, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to do it with everything that's been happening in 2021. So, we, the competition was promoted a little different this summer due to COVID-19. We weren't able to ask the students for help this year, but we asked the residents to go out and encourage them to get outside and explore the surroundings of the city, photograph images of the nature, river, and submit their entries. Especially this year, we really appreciate the positive effort of all the residents that went out and participated during this time. We had 69 photos that were submitted. These were incredibly talented individuals participating this year. It was fascinating to see how everyone captured the powerful, beautiful images and the up-close encounters with our water and our nature here in the city. We had a calendar committee to pick out the pictures. There were six of us, which included myself, Anne Eleg, Janine Wild, Maria Marrero, Mark Rogalino, and Milton Leggett. We're all from the Public Works Department and Utilities and Engineering Department. It was difficult picking only 13 pictures out of 69. They were all just absolutely beautiful, and we do really have some talented people here in Stewart. So, the 13 photos that now adorn the pages of our decorative publication, it's not only highly useful one. highly useful one, this time, each month it features about the water, environment, functions, and our services. You'll find descriptions of what a watershed is, where to participate in a neighborhood cleanup, our sanitation schedule for the holidays are in it this year, which will be a big help, and not what to put down the drain, so that's, that one's very important. It also has some special dates, like the date of our upcoming Water Fest, which was canceled last year, so it's March 27, 2021, so hopefully that will go on as planned. We did add a little silly fun thing in the calendar this year. Each month has a hidden sailfish in the, in that month, so it's kind of fun, kind of like a hidden Mickey. The calendars were mailed out last week to all the city residents, and they are also distributed through City Hall and the Annex for the public and any employees that would like extra. All the entries were wonderful examples and a strong connection to the city of Stewart between our river environment and our community, and some very talented photographers. We would like to congratulate the Stormwater Calendar Photo Contest winners now, and I asked if after you get your picture and your certificate, if you could just stand off to the side for a few minutes so we can kind of get a group picture as close as we can, wear your mask. Okay, so on these, some people won twice, so it might not look like a lot of people here, and we have a few people on Zoom. So for our cover and our October photo, it's Robert Piper. I think it'd be nice if the two mayors could come down, or previous and new, so they can get a picture together. Since Mayor Meyer signed the certificates. Okay, thank you. And our January, Mr., yeah, Mr. Piper, if you could just stand up here, thanks. For our January winner is Fred Peterson.
Thank you.
And for our February photo, Jill Butterworth. We've had lots of her beautiful pictures. And for our March photo is Bill Roestock. Should I say Captain Bill? And for our April, we have Paul Boblitz. And joining us via Zoom, Wayne King. He did May and December, so thank you, Wayne. I have your certificates at my office. And a very, another special one, joining us via Zoom, is for the June picture. This is very special. It was in memory of William Stockle. Patricia Woods submitted on behalf of her late husband, and I know she and her children are watching, and you should be very proud, and we appreciate you sharing this with us. So thank you. For July and September, we have Andrew Van Houser. Oops, should've flipped him the other way, right? And for August and November, also joining us via Zoom, Sal Defini. Thank you, Sal, beautiful work. Again, I just wanna thank all the staff and the residents who made this possible. This year's been a little negative, so this was really a nice positive, and we get to look at it all year, and we'll get it up on the website too, so everybody can see your beautiful pictures along with your names. Thank you, and let's get one group picture.
Hold the calendars up. Hold the calendars up.
Thank you. And thank you, Ben, for making that memory for us. Maybe one day we'll be on the front of the city calendar, who knows? I think we have the Health Department on the Zoom for item number six, the COVID update.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I asked for this item to be on the, the agenda, so if you wouldn't mind me just introducing.
Renee?
Yeah, our representatives from the Health Department. We also reached out to Cleveland Clinic, Mr. Rob Lord, who unfortunately had a scheduling conflict, but he did send me a written statement that I'd like to read after we hear from the Health Department and a brief discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Ross, we're ready?
Hi, this is Carol Vitani, and I'm here with Renee. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to give you a COVID-19 update. As expected, our numbers have been rising since just before Thanksgiving. We attribute that to, well, a lot of things, phase three and people socializing, as well as testing prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. As you know, our case numbers are still located up at the, on the website for the Florida Health, COVID19.gov, and you can access them there on a regular basis on a daily basis. And Martin County currently has 6,836 cases, and unfortunately, there have been 186 deaths due to COVID-19. About 8% of the cases are associated with the long-term care facility, staff and resident. And we continue to work very closely with this, these facilities since the very, very beginning of this pandemic, and we have dedicated staff that work daily with them to provide, you know, guidance and support if needed, and we also coordinate a series of site visits to review their infection control procedures and to prevent virus transmission, so we have closely with that. Just a reminder, it is flu season, not too late to enter flu vaccine. It takes about two weeks for the vaccine to take effect and to be technically then vaccinated after the two. So we do offer those flu vaccines for anyone ages five and older, and you can call for an appointment at our main number, 772-1400, and choose option three. Some other news that I'm sure you've all heard about is that the CDC has updated their quarantine guidelines and now is providing two additional options to the 14-day quarantine. That still is the gold standard and the most recommended, but if you are asymptomatic for 10 days, you can release on the 11th day, you'll be free of quarantine and you can resume normal activities, but we still, what the CDC still recommending is that you follow all those mitigation strategies at least till day 14, in case you should, you should become symptomatic, say on day 11 or 12, or 13, or even 14 for that matter. So you still wanna, you know, wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, et cetera. And then the second option that they've given is that you can actually test out of quarantine on day six with a PCR test. That's the nasal fungal test that you've heard and, and many of you've had over the past, and then you can return to normal activities on day eight, but also, again, following all those prevention measures up until day 14. And of course, if you become symptomatic during that time, then you definitely need to be tested, and, and then you resume quarantine again, especially if you're positive, then that makes you become in isolation, et cetera. So there are those two additional options, and we have been working very closely, as you can imagine, with the school district, because that definitely impacts our students and our staff there in spring, and we're working closely with their pandemic response team on a regular basis. One of the exciting things is, is, as you all heard, is the COVID-19 vaccine, and Pfizer last week was approved by the FDA and also was approved for emergency use. So this week, the United States has begun chipping throughout the country the Pfizer vaccine. Locally, we're meeting with our county emergency management and partners to discuss local distribution, which we're anticipating mostly probably more towards the spring. But of course, as you know, it's very quickly. We know that there's a limited amount of vaccine, so they are proposing a tiered approach. Our hospitals and first responders will coordinate, administer vaccines for their employees. The vaccine will be provided as a two-shot series. Pfizer will be separated by 21 days, so you would have to have another Pfizer vaccine after 21 days. And then Moderna, which is our other vaccine that you've heard about, which goes before the FDA this week on Thursday, number 17, for, as just did, as did Pfizer. So Moderna, this week on the 17th, will go before the FDA and, for approval, and then also, hopefully, they will receive emergency approval as well. And then those vaccines will be distributed accordingly also. One other thing is that the federal government is working closely with ACHA and the state with Walgreens and CBS. They'll be coordinating and administering the vaccine for all of our long-term care facilities for their residents. The Department of Health, other providers will be administering the vaccine for the community, and, which again, as I said, we're expecting in the spring, but it could be sooner, you know, that would be wonderful if that's the case. And we'll distribute that vaccine also according to the recommendations with a tiered approach type of engagement, and we'll follow all the traditional public health protocols and administration for vaccination. And we will keep you up to date as we learn more, we'll be sharing that information. Testing, of course, is another question that many people ask us, and it is available in Martin County through local providers, including, of course, our Cleveland Clinic Martin Health, our community health center in Union Brown, and additional urgent cares as well as CBS and Walgreens. But we do advise residents, though, to call ahead and make an appointment about any additional costs. The vaccine itself shouldn't cost, I mean, the testing shouldn't cost, but they may sometimes charge an administrative fee, so that would be something that you wanna ask about. Holidays coming up, as we know, we're in the, definitely in the throes of the holiday season, and we just really wanna remind everyone that, you know, travel increases the likelihood of COVID-19 exposure, and postponing travel is the best way to reduce this risk. Any traveler who is symptomatic or has had close contact with a person with COVID-19 and has not met criteria for release from quarantine, or has a positive or pending test, they should not travel. Similar to Thanksgiving holiday, we encourage everyone to keep their holiday gatherings small, with just the people in their immediate households if possible, more than 10. The CDC has extensive section on their website with, for travel guidance, so we highly recommend that if you are gonna be traveling, just to take a look at that is really very, very informative. And lastly, we want you to avoid the three C, close contact, crowded spaces, and crowded places. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from commissioners, from Ms. Vitani?
Madam Mayor, if I may, thank you so much, Ms. Vitani. I, I know that we are all feeling the fatigue here. It's been months and months and months and months, and I, I know I'm not alone when, even though it's tragic, sometimes these just begin to look just like numbers, and we kind of forget that these are lives that have been lost. I wanna pick up on your statement, Ms. Vitani, about the vaccine distribution. I know everyone has been putting so much stock in that being sort of the silver bullet, and I know it's so important for us, but just to clarify, did you say that, you know, Martin County Emergency Management will be primarily organizing the distribution and that we really don't anticipate to receive any vaccine until the spring?
Oh, just, just to reiterate, so we're working closely with emergency management. And as you know, the vaccine distribution really will come from the state level.
Right.
And with emergency management, we are just talking about right now, we're looking at our previous plans back when we had H1N1, and how we reach the community to review that vaccine, and we're currently in those stages right now, just reviewing what we, we have a draft plan for distribution, and we're working on those with them right now closely.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Mayor?
Well, I'm looking for a, a little more clarity on when we anticipate, and I know it's so hard to say, so I respect your position there. Really, just to illustrate the point that, you know, while we anticipate the vaccine to be coming soon and hopefully sooner than later, it's incumbent on us to, like you say, to manage our behavior, the three Cs, do what we can, because, you know, the vaccine is out there, yes, and it's promising, but until it really comes into our community and is available widely, which is gonna be some time, we really have to take care of managing the spread here locally, especially coming into holiday time. So, I guess, and then the other question I have is around testing. So I, I know, I've heard from a lot of residents, I myself have had a couple of times where I've been worried that I might have shown a symptom one day and called to arrange testing, and, you know, of course, there are many different providers out there offering testing. Some of the medical providers that I reached out to, even very recently, have said that unless I was traveling or. that unless I was traveling or had a confirmed contact with a confirmed case, that I was not eligible to receive testing unless I showed symptoms for three days consecutively. And I'm, I'm not complaining, I'm complaining. I'm not, I'm complaining, I'm not complaining to you, per se. But what can we do? Is there anything that we can do to help advocate for or help organize more testing? If we can't, we're not going to lock down, we're not going to mask. The only thing that we can really do is, as the government officials, is to try to figure out how to get testing out there as much as possible. Is there any way we can help you? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but what can we do?
Mayor, could we discuss this offline?
Sure. Okay, well, I guess I've made myself clear.
And to answer your question about, I know it's really hard to say when we'll receive the vaccine. You know, again, it really depends on the first tiers that receive it. You know, tier one and tier one A, which is all of our healthcare providers and then our long-term care. So we also know that we have AstraZeneca, which is following, is the third one in line. So hopefully, you know, all this will pick up shortly and we'll have additional vaccine that we'll be able to distribute quicker. We are, we are recommending, though, even with the vaccine, that this will be part of the educational piece, that you must continue to wear your mask and social distance, et cetera. And we will be doing another big push within the next week or so. Again, reiterating all those prevention measures like we did prior to Thanksgiving. We're going to be doing another big push and hopefully, you know, that will help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. And my question that I'd have, but it's not necessarily for the Health Department, would be something that I, I'm sure is related to probably the report that former Mayor Meyer will be bringing from the Cleveland Clinic. It's about where we are with our numbers at the hospital and our availability and ability to deal with the ongoing crisis. So if you, you have a question for her from that department?
I have a question for Ms. Vitani from the Health Department. Ms. Vitani, this is Vice Mayor Matheson. I, I recently did travel and I went up to Fort Pierce to take some tests with my family. And, you know, in watching the numbers, I've noticed Port St. Lucie's numbers seem to be significantly higher than Martin County. So my question is, I'm a resident of Martin County. My test was done at a lab in, in Fort Pierce. Obviously, it was negative, but hypothetically, if my test was positive, would my number, that positive result, have been related to my address? Or would it have been related to the lab that processed it in Port St. Lucie?
It would be related to your address. It would be as a Martin County case.
Good, thank you.
Now, how come then, I, I guess, where do the non-resident numbers come in on Martin County's testing or in the Treasure Coast when I see, you know, non-residents testing? Are my same numbers, had I tested positive in that lab in, in Port St. Lucie, would I be a statistic on theirs as a non-resident as well? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, that is correct. It, it goes by the residence of the individual. So if the resident lives in New York, although we count non-residents, and that's why you'll see that separation, it is really earmarked for New York City. So say New York would get notified of their case.
So in other words, if, if I did, being a resident of Martin County, traveled to Port St. Lucie and tested positive, I guess my question is, would I be counted twice, once as a non-resident in Port St. Lucie and once as a resident in Martin County?
No, you, you would not be counted twice. Once you are counted as a positive test, what would be in your record would be number of tests that you had, but not a new positive.
Okay. And the, the other question is, I was wondering if there has been any data that the Health Department has on if you can still be a carrier of COVID-19 once you've been vaccinated? Do we know that yet?
Yeah, it's a little too soon for that. We were actually on a call with the CDC and they were suggesting that it was also, they, they're, they're, from what their studies have, have said, it showed that it would take at least two weeks to show that you have been vaccinated. Kind of like the flu also, once you get your flu vaccine, it takes about two weeks to show that you have been vaccinated. But that is why too, because it's such a new vaccine, they're really recommending that we continue to follow all of those mitigation strategies with masks and social distance. They'll be following individuals, once, once you have the vaccine, it will be, there's going to be an opportunity to download a, an app on your phone. And they will be following you if you decide to do that to see how you're doing and if there's any actions or anything like that. So they'll be following individuals who download that app.
Okay, well, thank you, those are my, my questions.
The follow-up is up to one year.
Oh, good, good. We'll be building data as, as the vaccine rolls out.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions for the Health Department?
I do not.
Mr. Meyer, Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
And thank you very much, Ms. Vitani, Ms. Rouse. Thank you for presenting. We'll see you again. I'll make sure I vet.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
For the benefit of my colleagues and the public here, I reached out to, like I said, Cleveland Clinic Martin Health and Mr. Rob Lord. He could not make it today because of a scheduling conflict. But he did send us a written statement, which we'll put into the record. I won't read the full thing in entirety. I will say that we had a long conversation prior to this and he gave me the authority to say that we spoke and to describe our conversation. Mr. Lord wrote, "Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on COVID-19 from Cleveland Clinic Martin Health. Regretfully could not attend today's meeting to provide information personally. Throughout October and the first half of November, we saw a stable pattern of low COVID-19 hospitalizations at our hospitals in St. Lucie and Martin Counties. However, we began to see hospitalizations increase in mid-November. The number of patients hospitalized at both Tradition and Martin North Hospitals on December 1 was doubled compared to those on November 1. Though the total number of hospitalizations remains lower than what we saw at our peak in July, this week we are already seeing those numbers increase from the previous week. We continue to monitor the situation closely to ensure that we are prepared should the number of hospitalizations continue to rise." I will add, we believe they will. They are also, we are also continuing to see a significant demand for drive-through COVID testing at our St. Lucie West and Martin North Hospital locations. He continues to describe how they're partnering for the vaccine distribution and makes it a point to call out prevention measures, urging masking, social distancing, and limited gatherings. He also describes the Mask Up Public Awareness Campaign, that inter, an interagency hospital effort that has really communicated to the public the importance of wearing masks. In our conversation, one key takeaway that I think is very important to communicate, we are looking at these numbers, right? We're looking at cases, we're looking at deaths, and we are looking at specifically our kind of metric, which we've all looked at, I think wisely from the very beginning, has been our availability of beds, ICU beds, non-ICU beds, ventilators. We have a limited inventory. Our raw availability of those, being a small county and a relatively small health system, are not significantly large, although a percentage of the availability is, is quite large. The overall raw number is, is relatively small compared to our neighboring region. So it won't take very much for a significant wave to, to eat up those resources very quickly. So I say that only to say that because, to focus too closely on the current state of our staffed bed capacity is, I should say, bed capacity is a little short-sighted, I believe. The second important point is that the reporting on beds, available beds and ventilators does not communicate staffing. Since the very beginning of this pandemic, in our area and across the country and across the world, many cases, available beds, available ventilators were there. Staff was the limiting factor. People died, drowned to death because there was a bed available, but no staff to work the ventilator with them. So I understand Mr. Lord's position. He has his shareholders and his, you know, community to, to, to kind of speak on behalf of. It's not mayhem over there by any means. But he intimated to me that staffing is a critical metric that we're not seeing right now, that we're not watching, we're not able to watch very closely, and we need to think about that. Not just the nurses, but also the, the folks working in the labs who are running these tests. As these numbers rise, the staffing crunch is going to happen more and more. And so I want everyone, I hope we can all be cognizant of that as we look at the, the data, as I know we all are, to think a little bit about what's happening behind the scenes as well. So anyway, I thought I'd share that.
Thank you so much and thank you again for getting the Health Department to give us this update. Our next item is the 5:30 time certain, so City Manager, should we go on to our comments?
Madam Mayor, if you, if you, if it please the Commissioner, I'd like to ask for Nancy Terrell to come up to present.
Okay, all right, yes, so we'll have a presentation by Nancy.
Don't drop that.
Thank you very much, City Manager Dias. And I am with Neil Capozzi, who owns a City of Stewart business, Stewart Arts Supply, and is serving as the Arts Foundation for Martin County's current board chairman and under whose leadership we decided to bring the Corning Museum of Glass to Stewart, Florida last February. Fortunately, it was about a month before everything broke down in, in the world and our community. But we were able to bring Corning Museum of Glass to Stewart. We had over three hundred students from Stewart Middle School and from the East Stewart Rec Center come over and be inspired by these amazing artists. And we'll turn this over to Neil for a couple of words of thoughts, but specifically City Manager Dias for saying yes and of course, the Stewart Police Chief for saying yes because it was his staff who provided us in-kind services. It really, really helped make this amazing thing happen in the community.
Thank you.
We would love to thank you all, the community, the board, for the support they show for the arts in Martin and in Stewart specifically. So it is our honor to present this to the City of Stewart for the effort of the helping us bring Corning Museum of Glass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And Nancy, they, they made that while they were here during that.
They did, it's two pieces, the base and the glass sculpture are two separate pieces.
Commissioners, what do you want to do?
I'm happy to have you stand in as our-
I'll display it at my house for a month and then we'll pass it along.
That's beautiful.
Smile pretty behind those masks.
If you didn't get a chance to go over there and watch any of their demonstration, it was truly, it was fascinating. Oh, you know that's coming to me.
Ms. Terrell, thank you so much for all you did in bringing the Corning Museum here to Stewart. It was incredible exhibit. My whole family loved it. And, you know, every resident I talked to was enthralled by it.
I'm so glad you can enjoy it. There is a movement. Commissioner Smith is already on me about giving another large donation from the county to try to help make it happen again, maybe in 2022, so stay tuned.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Brunner serves on that committee now, so Commissioner Brunner?
I want to, uh, I'll just play it again.
I can't hear you.
Microphone.
Was that the, oh. Was that from the, the blown glass that, okay, all right.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you for all you do to support the arts.
Nancy, that was, I, I loved the glass blowing. And being from, my hometown is Cleveland, Ohio, which is the glass capital of the world and with the home of Corning and Libby Owens Ford and Owens Corning and all of the Libby glass. It was really fabulous to see that display, so I really enjoyed that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, for all that you do for the arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. You'll be able to visit it in my office at any time.
It's been in my office for a while, so I won't miss it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Manager, what would you like us to do?
It's your pleasure and you can take Commissioner's comments or you can take break until 5:30. Your choice. Commissioner's comments or break until 5:30.
Commissioners, do you want to do Commissioner's comments or do you want to wait until, let's move forward?
It's up to you, Mayor.
It won't take very long for us to do comments.
I have, will have some comments after the presentation, but I have a few comments that do not regard, have no-
Let's do comments now, okay? So Commissioner Brunner, do you have any comments?
All the trees in Memorial Park were so beautiful at night. And all, everyone that, that came in and, and they decorated a tree. If you haven't gone over there, go over there. There's a tree that they took oranges and sliced them and then hung them. It was so beautiful. And then there's a tree that, that looks like a pineapple. It's, it's really nice. It's fun to walk through there and the music is going. And I want to thank everyone, whoever got that together. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You are, yes, thanks. So Commissioner McDonald?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is just the, the tree, the, the tree display. That was a partnership between the Martin County Realtors and the City of Stewart and then FPNL chipped in as well. I was really very happy to be able to help put that together. And, and I participated as a judge on, on Saturday evening. And it was so hard to pick the winners. You know, I, I lobbied really hard for the City of Stewart tree, but, all of them, actually. But, but we did select, she mentioned one that looked like a pineapple and we selected that one as most creative. The one with the oranges was best overall. And then one honoring our first responders and nurses was selected as best spirit. So that was rather exciting. But in, in the spirit of the Christmas season, Santa Claus was at the, at the event. And I went and talked to Santa and ends up, all of you guys, everybody up here on the dais, as I checked, I checked the nut and asked him to check the naughty and nice list and amazingly, everybody was nice.
I know you didn't say my name.
I mean, he, he had to think about Mortel a little bit. But he did, he did deliver, he asked me to deliver some little, little, little gifts here. And they actually have everybody's name on it. I got to put my glasses on. I'm getting, no, getting a little, okay, well.
Attorney Martel doesn't want anything. Thank you.
I can't believe his elves believed the letter I sent him.
There's even one for Mr. Dias.
Oh, look at that. Nice, Santa.
Did this come from the river?
This is Mike.
Thank you, Santa.
And Santa was very nice. He was very generous. Thank you.
Commissioner, did Santa give you one? Did Santa give you one?
Me and him are working that out.
Okay.
We're having a discussion. I think I got some penance to do. We'll get that worked out. But it's, you know, you had mentioned Mike. It's been a tough year and it has been. It's been a, it's been a trying year for many, many people. It's been, it's been a trying year for many, many people. I know we've all suffered a, I guess, some challenges this year, and I think it's, but I think that these challenges will only make us stronger in the end. And I'm very excited about the new year coming. I'm excited about Christmas, and I want to wish everybody a happy and Merry Christmas. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Former Vice Mayor Meyer.
Oh, I have the receipts. Former mayor, you mean, right?
Former mayor.
I just wanted to say, I had, I was honored to represent the city, and just so happened the county as well, yesterday at the Hanukkah celebration here at the Riverwalk. It was a beautiful socially-distanced masked celebration, which I thought was very nice. And in preparing for what ended up having to be a few remarks that I was asked to make, I had heard over the weekend a wonderful interview with a rabbi in New York who had talked about the miracle of Hanukkah and how it often is thought about as the lights burning for eight days when it appeared they would only burn for one, and that in this time during COVID, when we're so challenged and we're so hurting and so lost, that the message of Hanukkah, the miracle of Hanukkah for us this year could be not necessarily that the candles burned for eight days, but rather, the miracle was in the faith of those who lit them the first day, knowing that they would burn, believing that they would burn. And that was a powerful message for me, although I am a Goy. And I think, I think we can take from all of our various faiths that we have in our community to think about what our holidays mean and what they can mean for us in trying times. So I take that message, although I don't personally celebrate Hanukkah, to mean looking ahead to a better future that we all believe in, although we have hard, trying times now. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Diwali, any other celebration that you choose that you celebrate, and certainly a Happy New Year. Looking forward to a 2021 that will be, will be a brighter day, so, thank you.
And as Hanukkah finishes and Christmas goes along, Kwanzaa starts for the new year, so.
Yes.
It's a continuation of the holidays. Our newly-minted Vice Mayor, this is just such a wonderful, wonderful thing to call you Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. Your turn to comment.
Well, I wanted, I was out of town unfortunately for the Christmas tree setup at Memorial Park, but I want to thank Commissioner McDonald and the Board of Realtors and all of city staff for helping spearhead that. I know we were all extremely depressed when we knew we weren't going to be having a VNA Christmas parade. And I think, you know, this community has shown that we can be creative enough to come up with ideas to celebrate and do it wisely. The stationary trees where families can go and experience the joy of Christmas and the entire holidays at their own comfort over the span of a couple of weeks. I believe they'll be set up till the 26th, if I'm...
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. So I look forward to bringing my kids there over the next night or two. And I'd also like to let everyone know about what the Stewart Police Department is putting on, almost a recreation of another stationary parade on December 22nd, next Tuesday, dashing through downtown on the Flagler Avenue Drive and that loop there. And they're presenting that in conjunction with Stewart Main Street and the DBA. So that will be a parade where you'll drive through and observe, you know, different cars and floats decorated out in the holiday spirit. So, you know, just because COVID in this year has been stressful, as we've all said, you know, this is a time that I've done so much lately, focus on your family, those in your individual bubble, pick up the phone and call someone that you might not have seen for a little while, and, you know, stay cheerful and celebrate the holidays. We're all getting through this together, and, you know, brighter days are here to come. So happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you.
New Mayor?
Thanks. Thank you so much. Happy holidays to everyone. I want to welcome our former Seals Point Commissioner, Jackie Thurlow-Lippish, who's our water person, I'd call her, our expert, our representative, and just wonderful. My time to comment. The City Manager has asked me to comment for as long as I want. No, I'm just kidding. First, I just want to congratulate Mayor Mike Meyer for his year as mayorship. You're always going to be mayor, and you're going to love it when somebody sees you around town and calls you mayor. Don't even try to say, oh, I'm not the mayor this time. Take it. It's a wonderful thing, and you have just been a stellar leader, and I had no doubts when you were nominated, and you have lived up to it, and you are, it's just wonderful. It's just wonderful. I hate to have to come to the culmination of your term, but it's just been wonderful to know that you've been there, you've been sitting in this seat, doing what you're supposed to do, and just, just doing a lot of other things around the community. I applaud you, and just wonderful. Our Vice Mayor, I can't say enough about what I expect and what I know is coming from our Vice Mayor, and he's, the first day he started, what, he made a whole hundred thousand dollars for himself, I think. But he was out there asking for money, letting people know that he's an advocate for the river, and I know that all of that is going to continue, so I just want to really, really congratulate you. I just want to share my gratitude for those who put their trust in me, and I really appreciate that. I want to show my gratitude for our staff, our staff at the City of Stewart. I don't know how, we have a three-minute time for people to speak and to do things. We can't give them enough ovation, and we can't give our police department, our City Manager, and all of our department heads and the staff under them enough ovation. They are top of the line, and they've just been working endlessly and tirelessly, and I appreciate all of them who work with me. And without the residents, it's just, we wouldn't have our city, and we wouldn't have our beautiful place to live, work, and pray. So I just want to say gratitude. I want us to continue this year with our unity in the community. I want us to cooperate, collaborate, do whatever we need to do, keep our cities safe and clean, our water clean, our grounds clean, our homes, our streetways, waterways. We're going to work on keeping those clean and cleaning up our community completely. I just want to really thank our police department for the work that they do in community policing and working with so many groups, the young, the old, passing out food, doing things. So Mike, you've just been part of a great year, and you've seen a lot of things happen. So it's just wonderful. I just want to say Merry Christmas, moving forward as usual. We're going to start again in January, February, being budget-conscious, and we're going to just have to be budget-conscious and really be nimble during, because of the times that we're in. So we're just going to continue serving others. Our staff serve so much. Their highest, highest business goal in the City of Stewart is to continue to provide the highest quality of service, and we have none better to lead us than our City Manager in providing that high quality of service. And we just want to really thank him and give him encouragement, and thank you. We don't have big gifts for you, City Manager, for the Christmas. It's probably in this little bag that Commissioner McDonald sent out, but we just want to thank. For all residents, I really want to say that this year, we want to continue with civility, supporting our city clerk. Between the city clerk, the City Manager, and the city attorney, and our department heads, that's how the wheels of the city run, and we just make sure that we check to make sure that there are no oil drips coming through when we do our thing here. But they're the ones who are keeping the wheels up and running, and we really, really appreciate that, city clerk. We appreciate what you do. You're really one of the main cogs in our city, and we appreciate that. So I just ask everybody to continue to support each other, support the food bank, support everything that's happening in our community, and we have something going on at 10th Street, on the 19th, Miracle on 10th Street. If you want to donate, you can bring a toy here to City Hall and leave it, but the best place to leave it is at the City of Stewart Police Department. They're collecting for Miracle on 10th Street. Please help us to help those who are less fortunate during this time. And it's just, it's just such a great thing. I help Commissioner McDonald, and all of us were actually there, except you said you were out, to set up for the Christmas trees from all the different departments of the City of Stewart and all the Realtors who have trees at downtown, and it was just a wonderful thing. Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. I know we had suggested that, let's do something, let's light up the park, let's do something, but you worked with others to make it happen, and it really worked out nicely, and we look forward to other people coming forward. So that's the last of my comments. I know that we have a few minutes. If we take a little break, and at 5:30 exactly, unless someone has anything else to say, we can get back at 5:30 exactly for the presentation by the Corps of Engineers. City Manager, former mayor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I neglected to mention, I know we had discussed during a shade meeting North Point, and I wanted to just say that we passed that deadline that we had in early December.
Mike?
Is there any, I just wanted to see if we could have like a brief recap for the public on that timeline, or...
You guys gave me a deadline of, the deadline was December 1st.
Right.
So yes, we have passed the deadline, and we then got a contact from Bob Rains on the Monday before, or the Friday before that Monday, asking us if we could extend it to the following Friday to give him five extra days. And it turned out that was really to, for Richard to hire a lawyer out of Miami, who sent us a letter that said that Richard spent $1.5 million of his own money getting the site ready and that we shouldn't terminate the contract. Richard's deposition was scheduled for tomorrow. The lawyer filed a motion for protective order today and got it canceled. I said to the lawyer, if you've got damages that you can itemize since the signing of that addendum, put them together and send them to me. I tried to call him almost every day last week. He wouldn't take my calls, and he hasn't responded to that email. And then I know that Richard had an ex-party communication with all of the commissioners by sending them a copy of that letter today, I believe. And I sent that letter and his email to the lawyer and said that this was highly inappropriate, and I doubt he would like me communicating with Richard if he wasn't present, and that if Richard did it again, that I would take him in front of the judge and seek sanctions. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer, for bringing that up. City Manager, do you want us to go on to your comments and the agenda approval?
We have nothing, and we do need to take the break. I'd have to reboot one of the systems, or rebooting one of the systems, so we need to take a little quick 10 minutes, so.
Okay, we're going to take a break until 5:30. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm calling the meeting back to order. We were here prior to the 5:30 hour, and we took a short break, and we're back with the City of Stewart Public City Commission meeting on today, December the 14th. I'm Yula Clark, I'm the mayor of the City of Stewart. I just want to welcome everyone to our 5:30 timeframe now, and I see in the audience we have former Commissioner Nick Blunt, and we have representatives from our Congressman Mass Office, our Florida Chief of Staff, Congressman Mr. Stephen Layton, and we have our Main Street Chairperson, who's probably here for another reason, but he's here, he's keeping business going downtown, Nick Schott. And we introduce former Seals Point Mayor and our South Florida Water Management Representative, And since it's the end of the year, we have our longest-standing attendee for the City of Stewart, no other than Ms. Helen McBride. We have a few housekeeping items to do before we have, is it Lieutenant, is it Kelly who was here today?
Colonel Kelly.
Okay, yes. So I'm going to let City Manager talk a little bit and let everybody know how we're going to do this. We're having a presentation, and I must say, thanks to Vice Mayor Matheson, as well as Max Stuckey. We said longstanding for Helen McBride, let's say longstanding for Max Stuckey pushing for the river. And so City Manager is going to give us a few housekeeping ideas, and then to introduce this panel presentation from our Corps of Engineers, who've been just enjoying being in our city for many, many hours today. We'll have Vice Mayor Matheson right after City Manager, and then after that, it will be the presentation by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and our City Manager is going to let us know again, there will be no comment and answer question session, but I think we'll probably allow Ms. Thurlow-Lippish to give a few comments, but right after that, we're going to be having public comments, and you'll have a chance to say something. And I think Mr. Stuckey will have a chance also. I don't see a card from him, but I think that, so, City Manager?
I think you've said it all. So we welcome the Army Corps here and Colonel Kelly, and we appreciate them coming. They've actually been here for a little while now on an important call. This item was requested and brought to us by Commissioner Matheson, and we appreciate his efforts as he's done over the past year-plus and his efforts towards the river. And as Mayor Clark just said, it's a presentation item, so it's not a question and answer. However, following this presentation is our normal public comment with a three-minute maximum time limit if people would like to speak afterwards. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Matheson.
So thank you. You know, coincidentally, right after Colonel Kelly's presentation, the commissioners might have a few comments. I imagine I might. And coincidentally, right after that, on the agenda item, is time for public comment. As it's been stated, though, there won't, it'll be public comment where we typically aren't answering those comments, but I encourage Colonel Kelly and the Corps and his team to stick around for public comment, especially those that are pertaining to the river. That being said, I would like to thank Colonel Kelly and the Army Corps for accepting my invitation to present to the residents of Stewart. We all know that emotions run high on this subject of damaging discharges to the St. Lucy. It is a problem we have been dealing with for generations now. Overpopulation and development have compounded the water management mistakes made by early Floridians. Colonel Kelly and his team are tasked with an incredibly tough mission, and I do not envy his position. Please remember that we here in the City of Stewart are hosting the Army Corps of Engineers, and tonight they will be treated with respect. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. That's it, Colonel Kelly? We've put down the temperature in the room.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you today. Just have a couple of slides. I may, I may point to them, but I really want to just, just give kind of an outline of kind of where we are in current time, how we are right here today, current actions going forward, and then what I kind of see as the next evolution, which is the, kind of the future of how we action the Lake Okeechobee and managing the system kind of in total. So could you go to the next slide, please? So this is a slide that I try to show, and it's a period of basically a couple of years. And the reason I kind of use this timeframe, number one, things substantially changed after 2018. So the fall of 2018, very, very challenging time. There is absolutely no doubt about it. And so as we were coming towards the end of the Lake Okeechobee manual, the current, what we call LoRZO-8, the Lake Okeechobee Regulation Schedule, that was originated at the time when we found dam safety concerns with Herbert Hoover Dyke and embarked on a rehabilitation of the dyke. So over that period of time, we had to adjust the way we operate Lake Okeechobee because of our dam safety concerns with the dyke. Fast forward several years, and millions, it's gonna be about $1.3 billion worth of rehab work on Herbert Hoover Dyke, that we will be complete in 2022, and that will allow us to produce a new schedule, which will get to Lowsome, and I'll talk that in a little bit. But again, so when 2007 landed, and when we came up with the current Lake Okeechobee Regulation Schedule, you know, it became glaringly obvious, even to the most casual observer, that our, that the, that the analysis of algae and its impacts was not in the environmental documentation. It was not a driving consideration of the Lake Okeechobee System Manual, and it wasn't really baked into the decision cycle. And so since that time, we've done an awful lot to kind of change that. And so in 2019, we embarked on what we would, what we call operational flexibility. And so at the end of 18, at the end of the wet season, at the end of all of that problem, we walked into 2019 and said, okay, let's take a look at what we can do. Three years of consistently high lake and total destruction of subaquatic vegetation in the lake, and the lake ecology was hurting for things that happened exacerbated by Hurricane Irma, but the lake ecology was doing pretty bad. So we took the opportunity at that point in time to knowingly operate the lake, to get the lake to a lower level. And so you can see that line at the very left-hand edge, as we were trending down towards the end of the dry season, to try to physically get the lake lower. The good news is, on the bottom left-hand corner, you can see the subaquatic vegetation was about 5,000 acres after Irma. By the time we completed that kind of cycle, you know, we increased that more than fivefold. So pretty decent success when you look in hindsight. It achieved one of the goals we were getting after. But I will highlight the February-March timeline. So that blip in that trend, we were doing, we were doing real well until February-March, lots of precipitation, and it drove the lake back up. So we had a choice. We had a choice to continue the current plan, or potentially find other avenues to release water. So in February timeframe, we increased the water releases to the Kalusahatchee and started releasing to the St. Lucie estuary. And we did that with the goal of meeting the end state, which was to make the lake lower by the end of the dry season. So we executed that. We immediately stopped releases to the St. Lucie. Once the oyster, once the scientists identified that the oyster population needed it, stopped. And so we did that, but we're able to maintain a tread line down, and we got to 10.79 feet. So at that, at the end of that season, we were looking, we were looking pretty good. Once again, we were waiting for all to figure out, you know, the ecology of the lake and how that affected over time. Again, hindsight being 2020, it worked out pretty well. But then getting into, getting into the following wet season, you could see a pretty dramatic spike all the way up. But what happened then was you had a wet season with the driest September on record, followed by the driest March, and in that time span, it was actually the shortest wet season that we'd seen in many, many decades. So we ended, we ended with the lake at 13.97 feet. So we ended lower than we had anticipated. So all the, all the normal, there is no such thing as a normal year, but the data kind of showed that we were gonna get up a little higher than that. So at the end of that season, you know, we were kind of walking into a little bit of conservation mode, which means we would hold back water from the Kalusahatchee, we would hold back water, keep water coming into the lake as best we can, because at that point in time, it looked like the lake could potentially get too low, and we'd be dealing with water shortage, cutbacks, and things of that nature. And what we found out was, by holding back to the best of our ability, we still got back into the March-April-May timeline, and you could kind of see that very dramatic, steep drop-off. So the dry season, and at the end of the dry season, you know, we were dealing with fires down in Everglades area, and it was looking pretty tough to be able to kind of keep the lake and have enough water there by the end of the year. And then this year, you can very well look and just see that pretty dramatic spike. So where we sit today, we are, we are the highest on this current date that we've been in the current operation schedule. So the lake is exceedingly high. One of the things we did this year that was perhaps a little different, when we were talking in the August and September timeframe, the Lake Okeechobee Regulation Schedule called for releases to both estuaries. And at that point in time, as we were walking into kind of a later on in the season, you know, we deliberately made the decision to keep our Structure 308 closed, so not allow lake water into the C-44 canal. And actually, most of that time, we were absorbing water into the lake from the C-44. So at that point in time, we made a very deliberate decision that said, we're gonna do our absolute best to try to get to the end of the wet season. And that was a tough call. I mean, that was, that was one of the hardest decisions I've had to make since I've been here, and that was a lot of consultation, a lot of coordination, a lot of communication with all the science groups. And we were just trying to get out of the wet season without having to execute releases. And so we were constantly updating how high we thought the lake was gonna be, what the precipitation was gonna land on us, because it's hard to plan, you know, looking at the weather in a crystal ball. So we made that decision. And what happened in October was we ran out of time. I mean, that is really what happened. In October timeframe, we made the decision to start releases to the St. Lucie estuary, and it dramatically increases out to the Kalusahatchee, because we were coming up to about 16 feet on the lake, and at that time, we had just started the Greek alphabet in the Atlantic. And those two options are pretty untenable, because at that point in time, it was releasing for dam safety concerns for the storm that could land on us. So that was a preventive measure to try to get ahead of a potential storm option. Since that time, October and November, kind of unprecedented. And October was 178% I think precipitation, and I think November landed somewhere around 350%. So the effects of Ada on the system were pretty dramatic. And so, you know, in October and November timeframe, I very clearly came out and promised everyone, and I did, I did mean my promise, even though I can't keep it. But at the time, it was 100% about, as soon as we could stem the rise of Lake Okeechobee, then we would cut off releases, and we would absolutely stop. And then Ada happened. And so now we have a situation where the southern end of the system is maxed out, completely maxed out. We're still dealing with a lot of flooding in the southern end of the system. South Florida Water Management District is continuing to do day-by-day heroic efforts to get the water out of the south, and we think it's gonna be about three or four weeks more before we can actually start putting water back to the south. And so now, as we're looking forward, it is not about the next storm, it is about being over 16 feet and trying to figure out how to get to the end of the dry season with the lake at a reasonable level, so that we don't look at next season as a problem. Because if we walk into our current projection show, you know, there's a potential anywhere between, somewhere between 12 and 1/2, and 15 is what currently looks like, depending on how the La Niña happens, and depending how dry the dry season is. You know, there's a huge amount of variability there. And if we're at 14 or 15 feet by the end of the dry season, the next fall is gonna be very, very difficult. There is almost no way that we would be able to engage in an entire wet season at that effort without significant releases. And as we know, that's not the time we want to do releases. At the end of the summer, at the end of the heat, that is, that is our, the typical algae bloom risk timeline, and so that becomes, that becomes problematic. So what we're dealing with currently is we are trying to produce a dry season strategy that gets the lake to a reasonable level while minimizing the risk to all the, to all the estuaries and releases out that way. The other significant component that we did this summer, so we managed to get through our harmful alga bloom deviation, right? So that was the time in, I believe it was August of this year. We tried it a year ago, it took us a year, we got tens of thousands of public comment to address and walk through, but we basically came up with a way to utilize a deviation to the schedule that allows us to take into consideration harmful alga blooms. And so now that's a tool in the toolbox that we could potentially release early, before alga blooms potentially could hurt, and therefore avoid what would eventually happen, which means later on in the season, be forced to release for dam safety concerns. So it changes a little bit of the timing condition as we go forward. So where we are right now, again, so right now, currently in the St. Lucie estuary, we're doing things, again, a little different. I mean, I think, I think the main emphasis is, you know, we have deliberately tried to execute Lake Okeechobee operations in a different manner, with a little bit of a different lens. And so this year, unlike previously, what we're doing is we're doing a five-day pause on releases, followed by a seven-day release schedule. And so we've worked this with the scientists and estuary experts, and we think that will, that that has a benefit to just a straight-line release schedule. So that's another version of what we're trying to do. You know, we're not 100% sure that that is the exact answer, but we think it's better than the alternative, and so we're walking through that now. And we anticipate this effort to end by the middle of January, and then by the time the beginning of February rolls around, we'll have a really good sense of what the effects of La Niña are, and we'll be able to articulate a broader strategy that really gets after where are we gonna end, where are we gonna end the dry season, so that we don't get into a problem come the next wet season. So that's kind of our current operations outlay. And again, the two things I want to, I want to just emphasize is, you know, we're looking at things differently. We are 100% in coordination and combination with the scientists, with our partners, South Florida Water Management District. I mean, we are pulling out every stop that we can to try to get to a point where we execute lake operations in a balanced way. And that kind of takes me to the next slide, which is the Lake Okeechobee System Operating Manual. And so this is the next big effort. So typically, we, it takes time, obviously, to change a regulation schedule, and in 2018 was a perfect opportunity. We knew it was gonna take a lot of time, and so we started that effort then. We were confident in our ability to complete the rehabilitation of Herbert Hoover Dyke in 2022, so we said, let's not wait, let's get out, let's get ahead of this, and let's kind of open the door. And so what we deliberately did was not start with LoRZO, right? So LoRZO, we weren't gonna do LoRZO 2.0, or LoRZO is the next step, right? We were fundamentally just gonna say, all right, let's start from scratch and figure out what can we do, knowing what we know now, decades plus, from our last effort. And so we spent a huge amount of time on the front end of this with scoping. We did a ton of scoping meetings around the state, just to get everyone's initial kind of set of where they are, what they want, what things concerned them. And we went all the way down to the Keys, we actually did a scoping meeting in Marathon, because we understand the overall impact of Lake Okeechobee against the entire system. So they asked to participate, and we said absolutely, and so here we are. And what you see right there is, those are the, those are the goals and objectives for the System Operating Manual. And the pictures up on top, those are the authorizations, right? So that's, that's what Lake Okeechobee and the operations are for, that's what it's authorized to do. And then the objectives for Lowsome are the four listed right there on what we want to achieve. We think we can get better in every one of those categories. And so as we've gone through that, we're at a pretty unique spot right now. We just completed 120,000 model runs of the Lake O potential schedules, right? And so 120,000 runs where it didn't matter. There, nobody, you know, you had the extreme on everything, as if dam safety didn't matter, as if ecology didn't matter, as if flow south didn't matter, you know, every one of those kind of got a sequence. So there's a, there's a data set that's 120,000 big right now. And what we're doing right now is we're kind of taking that initial kind of set, figuring out the pieces that correlate, because you know that, number one, the extremes aren't viable, and then you know that, you know, there's a set of, you know, 20,000 runs that are very similar and have very similar effects. So you can group them together and start attacking the problem. And so right now, in the past couple of weeks, you know, we've done six public engagements by function, so for each one of those kind of subcategories, we've gone through very deliberate meetings and public engagement on each one of those. And so the stakeholders across the board are kind of looking at the data and starting to pull a thread and asking us, hey, here's about the plan that I want, and so every stakeholder's gonna get their plan, and then we're gonna go into kind of Phase 2, or iterate, we call it Iteration 1. Iteration 1 of the modeling, we start managing those plans, then there'll be another model run that kind of finalizes and tries to balance, and then come July, the goal is to have the optimal lake schedule picked for implementation in 2022. And so that's kind of where we are. We've seen a tremendous amount of support and public participation with the Lowsome process, and so I think, I think that's going pretty well. The spring is gonna be very, very interesting, as we demonstrate the comparisons between all of those identified plans that each stakeholder wants, and we are 100% dedicated to keeping that going, to be in the public space, and to having this discussion as transparently as possible. So there's no question about when, where, how these decisions get made. So really excited about Lowsome. I think, I think Lowsome will be a significant increase to the way we manage Lake Okeechobee, and we envision that kind of being the standard for, you know, upwards of a decade, until we can get things like the EAA Reservoir and associated STAs online. That, that most likely would be the next trigger, you know, for a follow-on, and that's looking out, you know, eight, 10 years out in the future. So dedicated to the effort, appreciate the time today, and just thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel Kelly. Get back online here. So I'm gonna let Commissioner Matheson, do you have a few words or comments or questions?
I have, I tried my best to limit my comments, but I do have a few, if you don't mind, Mayor. Well, the Colonel, and I do have his ear, I'd like to first elaborate on what Stewart's goal is. Our goal, we haven't been shy about our goal of zero discharges, but I'd like to elaborate on what that means. And what that really means is zero discharges into our estuary from any unnatural source of water. Primarily, the top- Primarily, the topic of discussion and the main focus is on the S-80, which the Corps controls. But the other goal is stopping discharges from the C-23 basin, the C-24 basin, and C-25 basin. Our goal and the best way to get our estuary to hopefully bounce back from the point of no return, which many people think it's close to, is to have discharges only from our tidal basin. Only our natural rain that falls on our own watershed area should run into our river. That's Stewart's ultimate goal. And hopefully, when we can get to that point, then we can start rebuilding our estuary by truly, you know, working on seagrass restoration, muck removal, and oyster bed restoration. I'd love to sit up here and say, or demand, as Vice Mayor, to have discharges stopped right now. But I know exactly what the Colonel just said. We are in incredibly scary situation with the lake height. Basically, at 16 feet right now. All I can think about is how hard I wanted to advocate, and then so many of us did, to bring the lake, you know, as close as we could at the beginning of last wet season to its lowest point of around 11 feet. And the normal lake height increase, and it's hard to even say "normal" over a wet season, is roughly three feet. Well, what if we started last wet season with the lake at 13 feet? Instead of sitting here, knowing that we've had discharges damaging our estuary for over a month from the lake, we would have had them all wet season. And they would have been almost nearly full force all wet season. Which brings me to my point of knowingly, I hate to say, but we have to accept that logically, looking into the future of this next wet season, when algae is going to be at its highest risk, right now, the features aren't online to avoid discharges into the estuaries. But the best way to do it, as the Colonel pointed out, is pulse discharges, and we've been advocating for them. And they recently did one and gave us a five-day break, or at least that's what I and other activists were under the impression of. The problem I have with that recent five-day break was it didn't really turn out to be a five-day beneficial break to our estuary because of the rain. And I'd like to, you know, my first point is that the LOORS 08 decision-making tree models discharges into the St. Lucie at the S-80. So at a lot of calls or discussions, when we were asking for a five-day break to our estuary, we figured that five-day break would be measured at the S-80. You know, it turns out you did close the S-308 for five days, but we had rain in Western Martin County, which meant you had to regulate the C-44 canal. At this next upcoming break, I'd respectfully ask that perhaps half a day or a day before that five-day break, you consider closing the 308 to add a little capacity on the front end of that break into the C-44 canal in case unexpected rains come. So that the St. Lucie estuary, when the break begins and the S-80 is closed, can truly receive a five-day break. Because whether we call the water lake water or not, the water that's in the C-44 canal has come from the lake with discharges having gone on for a month or so. But I believe that the goal of trying to lower the lake and allowing pulse discharges to happen is the best way, but they're only going to benefit our estuary if it's a true break for five days to hopefully allow our salinity to bounce back. Now, something keeps coming to my mind, and it has my whole life growing up here. And it's shared adversity and flood control. And I clearly understand that the Army Corps is mandated by U.S. Congress to manage the lake with regard to flood control. But I do question, though, what truly does flood control really mean? And how are the priorities of flood control measured in that regard? You know, I would think everyone here in this room would agree that the top priority should be preventing flooded waters from entering improved surfaces like residential homes or businesses, actual structures. But what's further than that? You know, can a watershed or an estuary be flooded? A lot of biologists I talk to say absolutely. Right now, the Meksuki tribal land to the south is flooded. I believe that St. Lucie has been flooded for the past month or so, and so has the Kalusahatchee. They'll have a normal amount of water they should be able to take, but above that, they're The issue, though, is, I wonder, is there any other land that hasn't been flooded in this wet season? And I keep thinking of ag land and the EAA. You know, if U.S. Congress is mandating flood control and a lot of other special interests are getting flooded, shouldn't the balance of that flooding go everywhere? I've been given data that roughly a million and a half acre-feet of water has been drained off of the EAA this wet season. I'm not certain if that's correct, but I do trust the sources. But if that's the case, you know, imagine what the Meksuki tribe would think if we could take a million and a half acre-feet off their land right now? Or a million and a half acre-feet of water have reversed that that's flown into our estuary or the Kalusahatchee? So I just ask, as we move forward, we really, truly have to consider flood control, not just on land that doesn't have any water or wouldn't, but on watersheds, on tribal land, everywhere. Because, you know, right now, all the water conservation areas, if they're above schedule, in my mind, they're flooded. And that concept of shared adversary really needs to take place. And I don't want to keep going on, but I would finally like to ask you, Colonel Kelly, knowing as much as you do about the system, and I'm sure being aware of the responsibilities I and my fellow commissioners have to protect the health and safety and well-being of our residents in our community. What would you do if you were in my position? What would you want to tell a local business owner, such as a kayak tour operator or a commercial fisherman? Or a resident who lost their dog? Or tested positive for high levels of microcystin? What would you want to do as a Stewart City Commissioner, the newly-elected Vice Mayor? What's the best path forward to stopping the unnatural discharges into your community? So I'll leave you with that, and I'll see if any of my fellow commissioners have any comments on the subject.
Thank you, Commissioner. Colonel Kelly, did you bring staff with you or someone else? Please introduce.
Come up to the microphone.
Just for our record, so that we know that we were surrounded by the Army Corps.
Good evening. My name is Eva Velez, and I'm actually a resident of this area. So when you're talking about residents on the river, that actually includes me, too. But I'm the Strategic Program Manager of the Everglades Program for the Jacksonville District.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes, thank you. Colonel Kelly, first of all, I just want to thank you for coming and thank you for your service to our country. It's very appreciative. As a son of a combat engineer who served in Vietnam, I really appreciate it. So, yeah, he spent many, much time in Cameron Bay, Vietnam, so thank you. Anyways, thank you for your informative discussion. It was very helpful, useful. I also appreciate the fact that the relationship that you and the Corps have been building with not only the city of Stewart, but with Commissioner Vice Mayor Matheson as well. I think his updates have been very helpful and useful to us. My question is, what is the, when the lake is at the level that it is now, the, which is, what, 16 feet, roughly? How long does it take to get the lake down to the level that we want to be during the dry season, before the wet season starts? And how much of that is evaporation? Is there a fair amount of evaporation? Or, I don't know, if you can answer it, that'd be great. Because I'm just trying to understand how it works, so.
Yeah, so it's really tough, right? I mean, so there's no cookie-cutter answers. I mean, you're looking at the average, you know, you end up somewhere between two and three feet off the lake in a normal dry year. You know, there's a percentage of evapotranspiration that happens, but that depends on temperature and all kinds of stuff through the climate piece. So we get most of that. You know, most of that water comes, or a good portion of that water comes off on evapotranspiration. And then, as we're pushing water to the south, if it's dry everywhere, more water can go. So I mean, we have the availability of pressing more water south, you know, when it's drier. So the real hope right now, and the thing that we're trying to figure out, is we think there's a pretty strong link to La Niña, which means we think it's going to get to be a drier season. And so if that happens, we've got an ability to potentially get the lake into a manageable place by the end of the dry season. That'll take a little bit of effort on our part, perhaps a little bit of pressing. But again, that comes into about the February timeframe, when we learn what that correlation really is. So when we look at the data, I think it's the 1973-74 La Niña event, had what I would consider a great impact on the lake in this particular time. I would love to see the repeat of that one, because it really enabled the lake to come down pretty strong. There are others that didn't have so much of a correlation. And then, once again, it all really depends on where the rain falls. I mean, I mentioned percentages of precipitation, but if it falls all the way over on the West Coast, okay, that's a completely different issue. Or if it falls up in the Kissimmee, or if it falls to the south. I mean, the location of all of those little events are kind of cumulative in nature, so it becomes pretty problematic.
You guys are really juggling every time there's a rain cloud, trying to figure out where the water's coming from, I guess, so.
I got a secret plan of a crystal ball. It's just not coming yet, but I'm trying.
In the other side of this, and this is kind of from the future planning side, when the EAA reservoir comes online, whenever that is, obviously, it's going to be several years down the road, what percentage of discharges will that eliminate?
Yeah, so.
Or if you don't know that, that's.
No, I mean, so let me just talk bigger picture, right? So when we look at the Everglades Restoration Program writ large, right? So when you've got storage north of the lake, when you've got storage south of the lake, when we get C-43, C-44 online, when all of those things are running, the goal is an 80% reduction in estuary releases. That's the total, that's the total goal. Incrementally, as pieces come online, it kind of changes things. And so I don't want to get too far ahead, because when that comes online, what'll happen is we'll update the Lake Okochobee System Manual to optimize both the EAA reservoir and the lake together. If we get storage north of the lake, if that gets authorized and gets underway, then, you know, later on down the road, we'll optimize all three of those and have a true system in total that works together to kind of combine all that. So certainly, there are some benefits. We anticipate for sure that there would be, you know, less releases, you know, once you have an EAA reservoir unbound, but we haven't got to the level of fidelity to put a good number on it.
Okay. And then finally, you had an objectives list that had priorities and objectives. Is any one objective ranked higher than the other, or are they all kind of equal?
No, I mean, it's a game of balance, right? So the way we look at it, you know, if you deviate from one objective and it has a huge impact, that is significantly different than if you deviate a little bit and it has a small impact. So in general, you just look at an even playing field. Those are all the objectives. We want to improve all of them. If there may be a situation where you improve one more than the other, because the benefits of that have a greater impact, but certainly, you know, we don't deviate from those objectives. We think we can get all of them, to some degree.
Well, thank you very much, and again, thank you for your service.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brun, do you have any comments? Or Commissioner Meyer?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Colonel, for coming. I'm knocked sideways by the Vice Mayor's eloquent comments, specifically around flooding. I couldn't agree more. Flooding isn't just about flooding land. It's about, it can be about so much more. I have a few technical questions, and I know, Colonel, that you're still in process with Loosum. But regarding the objectives, the objective number one, managing risk to public health and safety, life and property. You mentioned that harmful algal blooms are now, even though we're kind of in LOORS still, a tool in the toolbox. Are harmful algal blooms part of that first objective of managing for public health and safety?
Absolutely. Just to add on a little bit on harmful algal blooms in the Loosum process. So about a month ago, about a month ago, right? Yeah, about a month ago, briefed the Blue-Green Algae Task Force for the state of Florida. And so what we did in that case is we're developing kind of a metric that looks at chlorophyll A specifically and correlations with harmful algal blooms and that kind of stuff that we can input into the modeling. So that harmful algal blooms will be in the models, and we could see some of that correlation going forward. It's not a predictive tool. We're nowhere near the ability to kind of say, you know, what the future holds in three or four months, or to be able to say that, you know, if you hit this level on a monitoring station, in three weeks, you're going to get this amount of algae. The science isn't there yet, but it's at least an initial framework where we can compare that in the quantity and timing, perhaps, of releases and see how that reacts over time. And then that will also enable us as time goes on. So the goal in Loosum, which is, well, I'll just say it this way, the goal in Loosum is to provide the framework so that there's flexibility going forward, especially in a case like harmful algal blooms. So the next level of science, we figure out something better, new, different, we understand it a little better, maybe we could predict it a little better. You know, we can incorporate that into the schedule as we go and not just say, oh, we created the schedule, we'll look at it again in 10 years, right? That is nowhere near the goal. Be able to adaptively manage and fill in those gaps over time to be able to do that. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you, Colonel. And then also, with regard. Yes, thank you, Colonel. And then, also, with regard to the conservation mode of operations heading into wet season, I guess, or you would expect to be a drier wet season. When you mentioned water, of trying to head off water shortage and cut, and cutbacks, are you, how are you identifying and prioritizing stakeholders when it comes to what we would consider to be like water supply? I mean, are we talking about municipal drinking water supply? Are we talking about agricultural water use? Are we lumping it all together?
Yeah, I mean, so, so from our perspective, from the Corps' perspective, it, it's kind of one box. And, and because, you know, when you get into those situations, you know, the state has very specific protocols and, and shortage and cutbacks and things that they do. So, that bottom, that bottom part of, of the schedule i- is where we know that cutbacks come into play. So, so we, we try very deliberately not to kind of get into that threshold, you know, and, and, you know, as we were in, in this past summer timeframe, I mean, I, I spent a lot of time, you know, a lot with the municipal water users, and actually was, was asking quite a few questions about, you know, water use for hospitals relative to COVID and, and things of that nature. So, for us, it's kind of a, it's kind of a box. But we understand, you know, where we're going. You know, our, our day-to-day partnership with South Florida is, is very, very tight. And so, as we came into, you know, we actually crossed the threshold of a water shortage management band, you know, in, in, in the past. And, and as those things were happening, you know, there's a constant dialogue, you know, is this a, is this a minor impact? Is this a major impact? Do we have to do something pretty drastic, or can we, can we just kind of ride this out? And so, one, once we get into kind of that world, I, I do, do defer to the, to the South Florida Water Management District in kind of getting their best recommendation going forward on that.
Thank you, sir. And then, finally, I know you don't have your, you have a crystal ball, but you, it's a little cloudy. So, with this, the post-releases that we're looking at throughout now and into the next month or two, are we, are, are we heading toward entering this coming wet season at a manageable, at a, at a desired level like we have in the last few years? Is that the target?
That, yeah. I mean, absolutely, yeah. So, so our goal is to have, at the end of the, at the end of the dry season, right, there's a calendar, you know, it's, it's just like hurricane season. Hurricane season starts one June, right? So, that's, that's kind of the, that's the mark on the wall. It's, it's not reality. You know, we, we watch it, and, and sometimes it comes a little later, sometimes it comes a little earlier. So, but, but when we look, when I'm looking right now into the future, what I'm looking at is, is a one-June timeframe where we're not in a place would be bad. And I'm saying those very vaguely.
Right.
Very on purpose, right?
Okay.
Because every, every week when I do stakeholder calls and media calls to try to explain, right, I, I go pretty far forward. And I sometimes, as, 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 as you well know, in October, you know, I, I made a promise I couldn't keep, right? But, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to quit trying, because I think it's very, very important to try to articulate what we see in the future and how the, how the decisions today affect that. So, it's not a, it's not a one day on or off. So, so as we're going forward, I'm, I'm looking at the trend line. I'm looking at how fast the lake is coming down, and, and trying to, to assist in kind of that, that slope. Because there's a lot we can't control. The dry, dry season, we can't control. You know, we have very, very limited levers a- as we kind of walk through that. But absolutely, I want, I want to show up on one June with a lake level that's manageable going into the wet season.
And finally, are you, I, I know we've heard some discouraging comments by Senate President Simpson regarding Serp and the EAA that have been echoed by Senator Mayfield. Luckily, Senator Harrell is still remaining strong and prioritizing and fighting for EAA this budget year. Are you, is the Corps still committed? Are you able to say if the Corps is still committed to moving forward with EAA?
Hundred percent committed. Hundred percent committed. We, we are moving out. We have not delayed. We have not paused. We have not slowed down. There's, there's been a couple of, a couple of things on, on things like new starts and, and budgets going forward, but that has not caused a single delay for the Corps yet. Obviously, future budgets, that, that could potentially cause a delay. But as of right now, we are cranking through the design aspects of these and, and helping and working on a day-to-day basis with South Florida as they get out ahead of it. So, as, as, you know, we're, we're helping with water permitting actions. We're reviewing their portions of the design for the things they're constructing, so that they can keep an aggressive schedule to the best of their abilities. So, we're supporting that effort, and, and we're doing the design of the pump station, the reservoir, as we go. And then, as soon as, as soon as the decisions are made, budgetary decisions, we're, we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Colonel Kelly, Ben, did you have, did you put up those slides on the board? The first one, the one with the, the words with the water, the goals and the objectives? So, Colonel Kelly, I'd just like to ask you maybe three questions, but most of it have been dealt with by some of our, our commissioners. So, right up there in the main goal, it talks about balancing congressionally authorized project purposes. So, you're here, you have direct privy, and we just want you to just give us a 101 in your direct privy with our Congress, with our President, and our financing, and how things are going, and do we need to get more help from that body, our Congress?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I think, I think, you know, from a, from a broader standpoint, what, what we do in the overall, in the overall ecosystem restoration for the Everglades, right, we outline a long-term plan. It, it's called our Integrated Delivery Schedule. And what we have outlined on that is a, is a, is a 10-year period between 2020 and 2030 that calls for about $7.4 billion. Five and a half billion of that is federal dollars. And, and so while we have seen the Everglades Program double in the last couple of years, that sustained level of funding, word-of-bills every two years, that kind of activity at the federal level is required to keep, to keep that very, very aggressive schedule.
Thank you. I have a few more questions. I think Commissioner Meyer brought up about the objectives. I just wanted to point out a few things to you that just came up to me, and maybe they're covered, but if you look at your five pictures there with the flood control, water supply, navigation, recreation, and then preservation of fish and wildlife, and we look at our five objectives, I'd say all of those are somewhat combined in the objectives. But what I'd really like to see in your objectives, whether, whether it's in objective number one, or whether it's down there in objective number four, is that we have those actual words that really spell out preservation of fish and wildlife very clearly. I know you talk about ecology, and we talk about health and safety, because at the end of the day, we don't want to have a dead poisonous Lake Okeechobee or dead poisonous waterways along. We want to have a place where human beings can still live along any of these waterfronts or waterways. And also, not just for recreation, fishing, throwback, but to, or to, to be on the, the waterways to boat, but to really be able to confidently eat and sustain themselves from the, 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 the life that's in the, in the waterways. So, I just wanted to, I know that it's, it's kind of built into those goals, but you had the pictures there, but I really want the preservation of fish and wildlife just right there. It says health, public safety, and we talked about ecology, enhancing ecology, but I'd just love to see it exactly right there. And then, of course, with that congressional funding that comes in, I know that we're working on Loosum, we're working out the releases, all those things. I didn't hear anything about a very, very specific plan to help release, eliminate the cyanobacteria. We know that those things are coming with, working with the water levels and the releases. It's all a part of it, but, and I know you don't want to bring us all the bad news and what the levels are. It wants to be good, but I still just want to make sure that we're aware of those. And then you said the south was basically full, and I was just wondering what was going on with, to the west and to the south, if you had any numbers of what was flowing south right now, and if there were going to be any major changes based on the, the Loosum, whenever that gets all, everything is really running. So, because, you know, we're still, what we, we're interested in on the East Coast here is things, when, when those locks open at, at, out, out in, at the lake, and then again, our locks here at, at, just off a Locks Road, when those locks open, people are looking at water flowing this way. And I know you didn't give us any details of that. And we have a very good rivers coalition here. We have people who keep us informed all the time. And I know you can't cover everything, but I was just concerned when you said that right now, the south is kind of inundated, and I was wondering, you know.
Yes, ma'am. So, so, very specifically, there, there isn't any lake water going south right now.
Okay.
So, there isn't. So, all the water conservation areas are above schedule, and you've got areas to the south of that that have flood control issues, and, and there's a lot of pumping going on. And what we think is, over the next three to four weeks, that, that we will be able to get the water out of the southern end of the system to then allow Lake Okeechobee water to then start flowing south. How, how fast that happens is a function of a lot of different things, like the weather, how much rain lands, how fast we can get it out. So, there's a lot of different components that, that we're working through to that. So, so that's what I mean by it's full south. And that, that marries up with, with our transition plan, which is why, you know, at, at this point, our, our staged transition runs out around the 10th of January, right in the middle of January. And, and so that, that, at that point in time, you know, it's going to be, we, we believe, you know, it's going to be a hard stop, you know, no more releases to the estuary, you know, conservation releases potentially to the, to the Kalusahatchee, depending on how that goes. And then, we're going to be able to take a good, hard look between then and kind of the beginning of February to figure out what I was trying to explain, you know, the effects of La Niña, and we'll, what, right? So, so at that point in time, a couple of things are going to come together. One, we'll be through a transition. Two, we think we'll understand what the water capability is for flows south. And three, we think we'll have an alignment with the La Niña effects and a potential longer-term dry season. And, and that's why, you know, that, that beginning of February mark is really our go-time, that, that affects the very longer-term solution set for where we end up at the end of the dry season at a manageable level. So, we're getting ahead of it a little bit now. That's how we're doing it. We're, we're mindful of that. But we're limited just by, just by the water effects that, that are on the ground right now and our capability to influence that.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, City Manager, do you have any questions for the?
No, ma'am.
Colonel Kelly? Thank you, Colonel Kelly.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to be going on with our agenda approval, and then, we're going to ask Colonel Kelly if you could just stay and listen. Maybe some of our residents have some comments that they'd like to make during the public comment period. If you could listen to them, we appreciate it. So, at this time, we move to approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Math, Vice Mayor Matheson, seconded by Commissioner Meyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda has been approved. Now, we move on to public comments. Our first comment is Anna Bergalis. If you could, we have a civility, um, code of conduct, and if you could say your name and spell your last name.
Yes, my, my name is Anna Bergalis. I live on the river. I live in North Souls Point. And I've been exposed to this all the time. And I'm not going anywhere, but everybody in the state's going to know what I'm facing. And 2018, my husband, I mean, you're absolutely right, what you're saying. Those microcysts, you better watch them, because they are in that foam. 2018, my husband had a high-bread pneumonia. He didn't have a regular pneumonia. He had a bacteria and a viral pneumonia. Not everybody survives that. Thank God, the antibiotics worked for him in that case. But don't you think that those microcysts and that virus and that bacteria are the same bacteria and viral? No, they change their armies all the time. They get stronger. They don't get weaker. And what I'm seeing now is with these pulsating discharges, everything is nice when they stop, but as soon as they start again, that water turns black. And that foam, it's not as bad as 2018, but that foam is still coming in. And I don't have the tickling of the throat that I had in 2018, but I watch that all the time, and I photograph it, and I put it on the internet so the world sees it, and they see what's going on in Souls Point and in Stewart, Florida. And also, too, I do not think that we got to, I got to look up at the sky and say, oh my goodness, it's going to rain. Oh my goodness, the weather report says it's going to rain for the next week. Oh my goodness, that water's going to turn black again. I don't think I have to do it. I think that water needs to move south. And, of course, it's going to cost money. However, they say, oh, like the EAA now, they're saying that Mayfield and that Egghead are saying that, oh, there's not enough money, dah, 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 dah. But the thing is, Ray Von, Von Hool, she wears these $4,000, $45,000 dresses. She wears $2,000 design shoes, and yet, there's all kinds of money for sugar subsidies. But there's never any money for us. Even these poor people that are, have lost their jobs because of COVID, there's no money for them. But God forbid, somebody has to buy a $45,000 dress, they got all the money in the world. And also, too, one-third of my social security goes into, goes into taxes with the IRA. And here I am subsidizing these idiots with billions of dollars. It's ridiculous. And I'm not going to move, but I, I have social media, and I think that's what the, the name of the game is, getting that, getting that word out, what's happening in, in our world, which is Stewart, Florida, and Souls Point.
Thank you, Ms. Bergalis.
And thank goodness we have Jackie, and we have the Indian River Keeper and the Attorney Stuck.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Thurlow-Lippish?
Thank you very much. Hello, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Congratulations, Yula Clark, on your mayorship, and congratulations on your vice mayorship. All of you are doing a great job. And the fir-, I have about five or six points, but I'll try to get through them quickly. The first thing I'd like to say that as.
Can you just speak up a little bit?
Sure. Is that a little better?
Move the mic up a little.
Is that better?
That's, thank you, ma'am.
That's better. Okay. First thing I'd like to say is, as Jackie Thurlow-Lippish, now on the governing board of the South Florida Water Management District, I am part of what is the local sponsorship for the Army Corps of Engineers to keep in place the Central and South Florida Plan of 1948. And if we went back and looked at the River, Rivers and Harbor documents of, of the Congress, and we also went back and looked at the Central and South Florida Plan, we would see those exact five things that Mayor Clark brought up for everyone. Those components, do you mind putting them on the board again? Those components come straight out of the Central and South Florida Plan. And those play out in Loosum, and they play out in everything that we do. But it's very interesting that it's the same stuff that started in 1948. I think it is very important to note that water quality is the responsibility of the state. Water quality is the responsibility of the state. Water quality is not the responsibility of the Army Corps of Engineers. We should be also working as hard with our BMAPs and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection as we are with Loosum, because the water quality. Protection as we are with Lowsome, because the water quality is the responsibility of the state. And I have to say that I am very appreciative of the Army Corps of Engineers for making changes to their operations for algae blooms, which is water quali- quality, because it's not their responsibility. It's the responsibility of the state. However, we are, um, partners, local partners with the, our overarching entity, the Army Corps. And uh, they have been very helpful at dealing with these god awful algae blooms that, um, destroyed Martin County in 2016 and, uh, again, but not as intensely in 2018. I would like to thank Merrick Matheson for his incredible leadership in getting Colonel Kelly here tonight. I don't know if those of you in the audience or watching on TV tonight recognize, may I go a little further?
Don't look at me.
Thank you. Uh, recognize how incredible it is for Colonel Kelly from the Jacksonville District to be here tonight. That is not a commonality. And for him to be here before your, uh, you know, council tonight is an incredible thing. And I think we should give him a round of applause for driving all the way here. And Eva too. And yes, sometimes we're mad about the things that they do, but we have to also praise the good things that they do. And they have done some very good things. Relationships. Relationships are the most important thing we have. The problems that we have are baked into the system. And our greatest strengths are in politicians like Brian Mast on the congressional front who can fight these things on the level where they started, which is the Central and South Florida Plan is a congressional act. And I think over time, we'll be doing more to crack that egg open. No pun intended. We must give the Army Corps of Engineers credit for the cultural shift that has happened over the past years. They do more media, um, events for, for the media. Colonel Kelly comes in front of councils. He's there at the South Florida Water Management District. They do not have to do that. And he, we, as you know, Colonels only have basically a three year life. So he may not, we may not have such a Colonel that is so open in the next one that we get. I hope so, but um, I am very grateful for Colonel Kelly being such a sport. And yes, there are lots of problems. And yes, we are mad. And yes, we want change, but we have to be grateful for the people that we've built relationships with who are changing the way things work. And Colonel Kelly is one of those people. Um, I wanted to say that absolutely, the EAA reservoir and 1912, executive order 1912, that is the priority of Governor DeSantis in the South Florida Water Management District. And we will not stop on that. And I wanted to mention, uh, Commissioner McDonald. You know, people do want to have like an answer for one thing, but that's not how it works. It is a collective situation. And so we are looking for a collection of projects to improve the discharge situation. And uh, you know that SERP has 68 components to all of it, but the biggest ones, the C44, which is almost done with great help from the Martin County government-
Yes.
-and taxpayers. And uh, C4, C43, that is, um, that should be done within four years. The district is completely doing that. And then the EAA reservoir, we have got to continue our advocacy for that. Sorry, my mask is falling down. When I get excited, it always comes down. Um, and uh, we will not give up. And if we, if there is money for ASR wells, there is money for ASR wells. There should be things north of the lake, south of the lake, east of the lake, west of the lake, just like the UF report said. And our greatest shift is our culture. Our greatest shift is how much we care. It is not that Central and South Florida Plan that has been hell for us, because we will overcome it one day. And if it's not us, it will be our children and our grandchildren. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So Ms. Thurlo Lipish took her citizen role, her former elected official role and her current South Florida Water Management Board role. So it's a lot of time. Thank you for your important comments. Mike Connor, our River Keeper.
Evening, Commissioner. First of all, congratulations, Yula, on your mayorship. Merrick, very proud of you, Vice Mayor. Good evening to all of you. And uh, Jackie, your passion is unparalleled. I will say that. Um, tonight, I just come to talk, uh, I follow us very closely as in the River Keeper. I look at, just text us every day. My phone is out 10 times a day, looking at data, looking at shut, flow charts, looking at where the water's going, how much we have coming to estuary, the salinity, things like that. Colonel Kelly, you can understand, as a person in my position, I've been here 23 years, uh, this has become habit. This is what we, how we live here. That's what we have to do. And uh, a lot of folks come to me during my, my work week and ask me why the discharging. And, and you know, folks don't understand the discharges, don't understand the difference between a tidal basin, local basin, and what I call pollution and water from afar. So the, the inconvenient part a bit about being in St. Lucie Rivers, we're downstream, we're at the end of the rope. And when you're downstream in this Everglades system, everything affects you, um, unfortunately. The thing I would ask you, um, in future, uh, public announcements about discharges, pulse releases, days on, days off, a- as Commissioner Mayor, Vice Mayor Matheson said, we like to have a little more clarity as far as if we are going to get a five day rest, a seven day week. Um, I would hope you would just shut the SAD law altogether for those five days, because if the lake discharges stopped to the C44, if we're getting the water from the C44 to estuary, we're getting the water. Doesn't matter if it's from Lake O or from the C44 Canal. As we know, water is water. And in some instances, the C44 Canal water is worse in quality than the lake is. And again, I-
Mike, just direct your comments to the commission for the record, please.
Okay, I'm speaking with the, okay, I understand. I thought just, uh, to speak to the Colonel directly.
Well, public comment time, you have to address-
Usually I speak to somebody in public, I look at you. You know, I want to talk. I let you have three hours with you with a beer down the street and we will really talk about the Everglades and our river. Maybe sometime we'll do that. But again-
I'm learning now as the mayor for the-
Okay, I understand, surely. But again, it's just clarity of public knowledge about the discharges, what we're getting, how long they'll be. And I understand now, Colonel Kelly, and I can still address them hopefully.
Yes.
Um, January 9th may be the benchmark, may be the date when we can, uh, see the Corps reassess where the lake is, how the estuary is doing. I don't need to tell anybody in this room, the estuary is severely impaired. We had a very wet season prior to any releases from water bodies outside our jurisdiction. So we started with a real sick river and we still have salinities very low now. I'm very fearful in the next three weeks, what more damage should be done to our natural flora and fauna. And uh, thankfully, it's a time of year we don't have cyanobacteria blooms, but we have all the other damages. And our terrorists are here, our economic impact is great. I do talk to merchants every week on the street and the water related businesses here have that look of fear in their eyes that they did in 2016, because the water's horrible. When a paddleboard shop says, I can't put my prospective customers in the water to field test that board, because that's Lake O water and looks horrible, I can't imagine taking them over there to the park to put a board in. And this is a time of year they need that money. This is the time. They've had a bad year with COVID, so it's, it affects people and Colonel Kelly knows that. It affects people. I would ask, um, the Army Corps to be on the conservative side. I wonder if they would possibly discharge too much. Let nature take its course. La Niña sets in if it's obvious. I think the lake, we need 48 inches off the lake to get to that 12 foot mark. And I believe in a typical dry year, between December and May 1st, 28 to 29 to 30 inches of water will come off the lake from environmental transpiration. And that means we only have another 18 or 20 inches or so to deal with. Surely somewhere along the line during the dry season, the Corps can find places to put the water south and make our discharge period as short as possible. That would be the best scenario in my mind. And I do appreciate the time to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Next, we have Mr. Max Stuckey and I'll just remind everyone, we do have a lot of public comments. Do your best to keep them to the three minutes. I know this is a very touchy subject for everyone.
Max Stuckey, for the record, um, since I only have three minutes, I'm just going to read my comments. I've given you copies of them. But uh, I've lived here since 1956 and watched the river turn into a black poison mess from a beautiful, lovely place to fish and recreate. Um, so my comments are, over the course of the last century, the Corps of Engineers, I understand now that the state of Florida has a share of the blame, but nevertheless, has eliminated the natural flow of surface waters from the headwaters of the Everglades in the Orlando area and essentially dumps the Everglades into the St. Lucie River and the Kalusahatchie River. They waste trillions of gallons of fresh clean water, which can, could completely supply the water for all of South Florida, and in the process, they kill our river. It's dead. Now with the reinforcement of the Hoover Dyke by injecting concrete 15 to 20 feet deep, they have also stopped the groundwater flow of millions of gallons of fresh water through the earthen dyke, thus imperiling the southern aquifer and saltwater with saltwater intrusion and causing the lake to fill up faster, requiring more discharges. This is insane. If the Corps did this to our river and was a private industry, they would be put out of business and their executives would be put in jail. But this is our own government doing this. The EPA created an arbitrary water transfer rule, which allows the Corps to discharge the pollution from a point source of pollution, which is what they have created in the, in the Lake Okeechobee into our river, because it is from one water body to another. The St. Lucie Canal is not a natural water body. It is a manmade sewer pipe. The EPA needs to be sued to change the rule or eliminate the rule. Any agency which intentionally puts pollution into any source, from any source, into a natural resource should be subject to injunction and penalties. The Clean Water Act should apply to our own government. Ironically, the muck and fertilizer they discharge, which killed the St. Lucie, would actually be good for the sugar fields. The sugar thrived in the EAA because of the Everglades muck, which they have depleted. If the sugar companies would store this water, which, store this water and muck on their own private water farms and use crop rotation to make fields available to hold the water, they would be creating sustainable fertile land and allowing the water to percolate into the aquifer, leaving the valuable muck and fertilizer. We need, we need to stop these discharges. A former Colonel told Mark Perry that the, this is my last comment, is the only way to stop these discharges permanently is an act of Congress, which will never happen because we have senators who are in the pockets of big sugar. So the only thing that'll stop them is a federal judge giving the order to stop. And I've asked you to pursue that. With that, I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you. Our next, our next speaker is, um, I almost said Commissioner. Eve Samples.
Thank you, Commissioners. Eve Samples, I'm a resident of Stewart and I'm also Executive Director of Friends of the Everglades, which is now based in Stewart. We were founded by Marjorie Stoneman Douglas in 1969. She wrote River of Grass and she advocated on these issues for many decades until she died. And it's very fitting we're based here now, because as you know, Stewart is ground zero for our environmental fight in Florida. As I'm sitting here listening to Colonel Kelly and listening to you all and your astute comments, I can't help but think back to the lost summer of 2013. Mean Green 2016, I think we called it. Toxic 18. And now we're kind of celebrating having pulse discharges as Christmas approaches. And I just think, is the bar that low? Like, we, we feel good about that. And we have a rough year ahead of us, make no mistake. If the lake, if La Niña doesn't materialize as promised, the lake's going to be very high as we head into the next rainy season. And all of the elements that created toxic algae in 2016 and 2018 still exist. Nothing has changed. So I'm sitting here and I'm also thinking about former Senate President Joan Negron and what he used to like to say on this issue. He said, "We need meaningful progress in reasonable time." And can anyone in this room say we've had that? So it's been seven years since 2013 and we have not had it. So, so why is that? We've, we've had deviations by the Army Corps of Engineers, which is a minor improvement, I'd say. Um, we've had 1.3 billion dollars pumped into the Herbert Hoover Dyke, ton of taxpayer money, but all of these elements still exist for us to be dumped on with toxic water again and on the Kalusahatchie side. So will we be able to say yes to that question after Lowsome? I don't know. Um, I, I hope so, but it's an uphill battle. I'm sitting in on these Lowsome meetings, subteam meetings, 120 something thousand models being processed, all of these competing interests. And will toxic water stop coming our way when we have this new lake plan online in 2022? There's no guarantee. So what do we have to do? Water managers, that's the Army Corps of Engineers, yes, but, but they are taking their marching orders. That's also the South Florida Water Management District. That's our state lawmakers. They have got to stop prioritizing draining the EAA over protecting residents who live along our estuaries. It is common sense, it's obvious, and the state and the Water Management District can influence this through their water permitting processes. So, you know, the definition of flooding, Vice Mayor Matheson, that you alluded to, I think is a really promising issue to explore. And Mayor Clark, I'm really glad you brought up the issue of subsistence fishermen, because too often this is painted as an issue of coastal elites versus people who rely on the sugar industry to survive. It is not either or. We can serve both residents, both groups of residents. So we haven't had meaningful progress, but what we have had in recent years is revelations in how really threatening toxic algae is to human health. So I'll just implore upon you all to do everything in your power to change this out of whack priority system we have in the state of Florida. We at Friends of the Everglades will do the same. And in the meantime, we have started a fix the flow petition. We have about 1,100 residents who have signed on. And we are hosting state lawmakers on a virtual session that actually the city of Stewart has helped us host, along with Rivers Coalition, Florida Oceanographic, and who am I forgetting? Friends of the Everglades, of course.
Riverkeeper.
And Riverkeeper, thank you. Indian Riverkeeper this Thursday. So please listen in and I'll just leave you with this one last quote from the former editor of the Stewart News. "What men do, they can undo," Ernie Lyons said, "and I, I do still keep hope despite all these headwinds." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. If there are any public comments on the presentation, now's the time to do it. You could send in a card. If not, we're almost going to end our public comments section. I do have two public comments on item number 18 and item number 20. For those persons, I'd say if you want to make your public comments now and leave, they'll be heated at the time the items come up. If not, those items will be called, your name will be called when those items are, are coming up. Item number 18 regarding Grand Park and item number 20.
Mayor? Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, item number 20 was for two items. They wanted to speak on this item as well, or on this presentation.
Okay, Mr. Borny, could you please come up? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm, I'm going to propose something that's a partial solution to what happens-
Mr. Borny, if you could observe the mask.
I can.
Rule. Thank you.
I'm going to propose something that's a partial solution to what happens to our river on time. We have an, an option that isn't being explored yet, that can move a lot of the water that comes down the North Fork and in underneath the Roosevelt Bridge, bludgeoning our lagoon, killing our animals, turning the water black. It's our own local discharge and we have heavy rains. And it amounts to between 80 to about 190 to 200,000 acre feet of water. 200,000 acre feet of water is a lot of water. It's six inches on Lake Okeechobee. It's a lot of water. And it's from our own basin. And that water, that water used to go north. Uh, half of, uh, half of St. Lucie County and the northern third of Martin County used to go north into the St. John's Marsh. I serve on the St. John's governing- I serve on the St. John's governing board. We have a basin of 200,000 acres in the upper basin that needs the water. It's 200,000 acres, and we could use another foot and a foot and a half of water in there. We have peppers growing up and cabbages growing up, and with the water that is being discharged by South Florida to the tide can move north and into our basin where we want and need the water, and the cities all the way up to Jacksonville can utilize that water. Agriculture can use that water. It's a water supply rather than a detriment to our lagoon and to our river system. So if South Florida will work with St. John's, and I'm on the governing board, and I'll sign any document, a memorandum of understanding allowing them to have the water back when dry, we will do that tonight if they would do this. But if we reconnect these districts, you can get rid of the second biggest amount of water next to the C-44 discharges that you can deal with right now. That's the second biggest amount of water, and you can get rid of that. I'm standing here as a member of the St. John's governing board, willing to do this and wanting to take that water and feed the cities that want that water and all the people and agriculture that could utilize the water and clean it in the 200,000-acre marsh of the St. John's. It's a winner for this river. It's a winner for the people and the water needs of our state. The whole peninsula needs that water. And here's the detriment where it can be utilized as a positive. So you've got a win-win-win if you're willing to play and do this. And I've got a resolution from every city and county supporting the concept of looking at this. And I'm trying to work with the South Florida Water Management District. Jackie knows this well. I've had her Executive Director up there for a tour, and their Chairman, and they like the idea. They're exploring it. I encourage you, and I know Jackie's on board because she sent me the very first article, 1951 Stewart News, that showed where the drainage used to go was north. It didn't go here. And I'm a local. I have a home here. My mom and dad had a home here in Martin County. I keep my boat at Piers Cove. I dive and fish these waters every weekend I can. So I'm a local. I love this place. I want to do the right thing, and I'm proposing a solution.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor, for helping me out. Apparently, we had Blair, Blair Rickström's note was here, and we didn't get to call you. So Blair Rickström, please.
Well, thank you very much. I think, as most of you know, I'm a publisher of Florida Sportsman Magazine. It's the largest fishing magazine in the state. We produce television shows. We have a website. We have social media. The reason I mention that again is the value to the state's economy, our local economy, the marine industry. It's literally seven times what the sugar industry claims their economic impact is. So they're claiming something, and I'm taking their numbers to heart. But it's, we're, as a state, the South Florida even, is essentially four times what the entire sugar economic impact is. I mention it because we make decisions in the PDT meetings. We're making assumptions with those 120,000 runs. I'm not confident that there's one run where we take water and put it on the EAA. Right now, we've had approximately about 20 billion gallons discharged into the St. Lucie Estuary this year. If we would have taken that water and moved it into the EAA, it would have amounted to about 15% of their land, about 67,000 acre feet. 67,000 acre feet. We would have zero discharges into the St. Lucie Estuary. We can do that. Those assumptions, I participated in a PDT meeting, and I looked at the assumption, the run, that would stop the discharges to the St. Lucie Estuary. In that run, in that assumption, it was like there was a sort of a, kind of a reaction in the room that it completely blew up the whole system. Well, it blew up the system because we stopped the discharges, but we didn't do the other things that were required to stop it from blowing up. We didn't send, in those assumptions, in those PDT models, they didn't send the max water, what they're asking for on the Kalusahatchie side, of 1,200 CFS. So they didn't give, in that model, to stop all discharges, they didn't increase any water going south, and they didn't even include what the minimum was supposed to be going west. And then they said, "Whoa, we can't do this." And that was the model that I witnessed when they went through the models at the PDT meeting prior to COVID, when we could meet in person. It was down in West Palm at the South Florida Water Management District. So it's kind of like that old adage, garbage in, garbage out. If you don't put the right information in to get the right assumptions to stop the discharges, it's not going to happen. And I mentioned about the value of the recreational fishing industry. We're just an industry, just like the sugar industry. Why should they be the only one that we continue to drain? And all of our resources go into that when all of our other industries are taking it? And so that was essentially my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rickström. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And again, Colonel Kelly, thank you for coming to speak to us today, and we truly appreciate it. I'm going to ask you, Colonel Kelly, if my board agrees to have our City Manager at least send you a list of some of the things that were brought up today, would that be to your liking? Okay, so if we could just make a short note between the Clerk and the City Manager of all the items that were brought up by our Commission, as well as members of the public, we appreciate that. And as always, all of our City Commission meetings are open to the public. Those who are online, if you have questions from the Congress on down to the Corps of Engineers, to the South Florida Water Management, to us here at the city, please send in your comments and questions so that we can better educate ourselves. Again, I have item number 18 and number 20 as to be waited on for public comment.
Madam Mayor, you have to call for Zoom comment.
Paul, you have comment on the presentation by the, thank you.
Do you have their calling angle of the phone number? So I do not have any.
Yes, sir.
I will allow.
Could you please direct them, sir? Okay. Phone call, you're on.
Hi, my name's Becky Harris, 1075 southeast St. Lucie Boulevard. I think you guys know that I'm one of the six people who had dogs in 2018, whose dog almost died from the toxic algae then. So what I'm commenting on today is something that I gave public comment on last week at the South Florida Water Management Meeting, but I think it bears repeating. I live on the St. Lucie, across from school. I do weekly water monitoring.
Ms. Harris, you're becoming muffled. If you could stay directly with your phone.
Can you hear me now?
Lower the background. You're becoming muffled.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Just a little bit more forceful. Thank you.
I can be forceful.
Yes, ma'am. Does she need to be turned up?
I can do that.
Okay.
You ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I do weekly water monitoring for the Marine Resources Council, which means I test the river's pH, salinity, dissolved oxygen, seki visibility. During the October-November discharges, my numbers were terrible, obviously. My seki visibility was barely at a foot and a half, and I saw an all-time low of salinity of two. For my area, it's supposed to be good. It's supposed to be above 25. So last week, I tested after the discharge stopped, and my seki visibility improved. I could see it at three and a half feet, and salinity was on the rise to 15, still below 25. So it's obvious. I mean, the difference between the terrible values and the improving values is the Lake Okeechobee discharges. And we all know this. We all know the discharges are literally killing the estuary. It can be seen visibly through chemistry. We see sea grass and oysters dying. I mean, there's so many ways that we see the estuary dying. I've been fighting this for two years, you know, and I appreciate what the district is doing, what the Corps is doing. I know they're trying to send less discharges our way. I also know we have cert projects coming on board that will also help. But this estuary can't wait for those projects. This estuary and this community need the Army Corps to exhaust all options and use all flexibility to get to the goal of zero discharges. We need zero discharges. So I want to thank the Corps for their efforts. I do appreciate what they're doing because this is a super complicated operation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Paul, is there any more?
No, ma'am. That was everyone on.
Okay. For those who are online, this is your last chance to comment on the presentation by the Colonel Kelly from the Army Corps of Engineers. Hearing no further discussion from my Commissioners and no further public comment on this matter or any other matter at this time, I'm going to close the public comment and move on to adoption of the consent agenda.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
It has been moved and approved, moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you, we're going to do roll call because there are several items on the consent agenda that require money. Is that it?
Correct.
There's just that one, the triangle parcel.
Yes.
Roll call.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matheson?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes, and I'd like to say for those who are at home or not seeing the agenda, we also had the collective bargaining agreement with the PBA on the consent agenda also. We'll just continue moving forward to our Commission action items. And our first item is the liaison appointment and reappointments to advisor boards of the city. And before we appoint anybody or agree with anything, I just want to say a big thank you for those who have served and those who will be serving, and for those who are not serving anymore, again, we just want to thank you so much for what you've done. Item number 15, what is the will of the Commission?
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the persons on the list, Mr. City Manager, is there anyone that needs to be, and Madam Clerk has done the background check, is there anyone that needs to be taken off, or is there a vacant spot that we will need to come to at a future time, or is everything on the list okay?
Everything on the list as of today is okay.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board? Oh, we have a move in a second already?
Ma'am, I have a motion by Commissioner McDonald and a second by Commissioner Meyer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So congratulations, Mr. Schroth and everybody else who's been here. Thank you so much, Ms. McBride.
Wait, Nick was on there?
What was that?
No, you already moved.
Oh, we're changing our minds? Let the record show that Nick Schroth had, no, very good. Thank you so much for those who come or those who are online. We thank you for your service or for your potential service in the future. Thank you. Number 16, that may be where I saw the vacant spots. Appointment of, yeah, it's all empty. We have to go again. Appointment of the City Commissioners to various boards.
Madam Mayor, so historically, probably the best way to do it is start at the top of vacant one, Airport Noise Advisory, and go down the list and see who would like to choose those particular ones and divvy them up as equally as possible amongst the different Commissioners. I do want to point out that the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, that this is our voting term, so we are not the alternative. We are the voting member from 2021 to 2023.
Let me find the top of the list here. So the Airport Noise Advisory Council. I know Troy was on it before. Does anybody want to be on it?
I'd prefer not to be.
Okay.
It doesn't do that much and probably should sunset anyways, but.
Well, then I'll take it since I live closest to the airport.
Okay.
Okay, the Arts Council. Commissioner Brunner is on that currently.
Would you like to stay there?
I'll continue, yes. Okay. The Business Development Board.
I would like that if there's no objection.
Commissioner McDonald. The MPO.
I've enjoyed serving on the MPO and would like to continue to do so.
You want to do it this time, Troy?
If it's okay with you, if you don't mind rolling off, I would love to go back on the MPO. I enjoyed that.
I was waiting to be a chairperson of the MPO one of these days, but that's okay. No, that's okay. You can take the MPO. That's been the only one that I've been on this year, but you can take it.
Okay, great. Then maybe you can take the Regional Planning Council when we get to it, unless somebody else wants it.
Okay, I was thinking of that, but that's.
Let's just try and stay in order. We got to write them down, too.
MPO, so the Tourist Development Council.
I have enjoyed serving on that and would be happy to continue to do so.
Okay, Commissioner Math, Vice Mayor Matheson. The Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, I'll take that if nobody wants it.
You're talking about the Council of Local Governments?
Oh, sorry. That's you, sorry. The TC, Council of Local Governments, which I think Vice Mayor Brunner and Mayor, former Mayor Mike, has been our representative officially, and he's a member of the board on that.
Well, Council of Local Governments, I currently serve on that board and I'll be, well, we haven't done our nominating committee yet, but I understand that I'm being placed on for second vice president. I like serving, I think serving on the local governments and the League of Cities is good for the same person to do. I think there's a lot of synergy there, and I certainly would really like to keep the League of Cities position as the first vice president this year. So I'd be happy, I prefer to stay on with both of those boards.
Okay, so Commissioner Meyer has asked to stay on the Council of Local Governments as well as the League of Cities. Any objection by anyone who wants to be on there? Okay, you have it. And the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
We need an alternate for the.
For the League of Cities or for both of them?
Just the League of Cities.
Who has been the alternate? Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Yes, I think, yes.
Would you like to stay on it, Commissioner Brunner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Oh, so it's.
It's an easy one, Becky, because I'm always there. But when we have a, you know, a bigger event like our installation luncheons or other things, you know, you're always welcome to come.
You're having a meeting this Wednesday, right? Lunch meeting?
We have our annual installation luncheon, yes.
Okay. And congratulations. Are you going to be the?
First vice president.
Okay, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Okay, then we have the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
You're going to take that one?
I'll take that one. Okay.
Now we need a vote to approve.
Move to approve. The slate is discussed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, was it Commissioner Math, or Vice Mayor Matheson who was going to be on the Regional Planning Council, or was it Mayor Clark?
Mayor Clark.
I'll keep everybody in the loop. Okay, so Commissioner McDonald made a motion. Was there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Matheson. Clerk, is this all in favor?
All in favor is fine.
All in favor is fine?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously. Clerk, could you please read back the board for us?
Public comment.
Could you, okay, could you read the appointments before we have public comments?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I have Airport Noise, Mayor Clark, Arts Council, Commissioner Brunner, Business Development Board, Commissioner McDonald, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Matheson and McDonald, Tourist Development Council, Commissioner Matheson, Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, Commissioner Meyer, Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities, Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner Brunner as an alternate, and Treasure Coast Regional Planning, Mayor Clark.
Is there an alternate for the Treasure Coast Regional Planning?
No.
No, it's, but it's a different city.
Right.
Okay, good, and we're the voting member this year. Okay. All right, so the, the list has been read. Any public comments on the appointment of our City of Stewart Commission to these various board memberships? Any public comments? See no public comments? Um, did we call for the vote?
All in favor is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The next item is, and congratulations to everyone, looking forward to hard work. Item number 17, the La Cita Cottage Home.
Madam Mayor, uh, just really quickly, just so I'm clear, uh, on our, uh, the commission board membership page for the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, so it's a long-term cycle, we're a voting member from 2021 through 23?
Correct.
Oh, wonderful, great, thanks.
Okay. And whoever serves on that, that's, yeah.
You.
Okay. Uh, La Cita Cottage Home, item number 17. Staff?
I'll move for approval.
This is Resolution Number 127-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, granting a major urban code conditional use approval to La Cita Investment Properties LLC, owner of the property located at the southwest corner of southeast Osceola Street and southeast Georgia Avenue as described within the attached legal description, granting approval for a single-family home in the urban general zoning district to allow the rear setback to be less than 15 feet and for parking to be located at the front of the building, providing an effective date, providing for a timetable of development, providing for conditions of approval, and for other purposes.
I had moved for approval.
I'll second that.
There's, there's, Commissioner Brunner moved for approval, seconded by Commissioner, um, McDonald.
I have.
You have comments? Anybody have any comments? Okay, let's discuss.
So.
Commissioner, um, what?
Want a comment?
Uh, I do.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
You know, one of my, my issues is on the plans, um, I, I'm not opposed to, to the adjustment and approving the variances in the setback is that a year or so ago, we had much discussion about a six-foot shadow box fence on Finney Street, and in these plans, I've noticed there's a six-foot shadow box fence along Osceola Street. And, you know, I can't understate how long that debate went on, and it was a healthy and hearty debate, but that's, one of, one of my issues is that that debate keeps coming to top of my mind. So perhaps the applicant can expound on this. Is there a way that that could be spruced up, altered, improved?
Yes.
Whatnot?
Uh, Tom La Cita, for the record, Vice Mayor Merritt Matheson, um, that's an error because the shadow box fence is along the back property line?
Okay.
And the side property line, that's a budding parking area. On Georgia Avenue and on Osceola would be a, probably a white picket fence. I'm trying to, uh, the inspiration is California Akron, those smaller cottages, so on the two street sides, you'd have that.
Then, that clarifies it. That's what I was going for, Mr. La Cita, is, is, you know, the pot stand, you know, inspiration works fine with me, it was just that.
Right. So I'll modify the plant, if it, if it shows that, I was unaware, I'll modify it.
And are there plantings also, Mr. La Cita, landscaping?
Uh, no planting. No, I'm kidding. I'm, yes, of course.
He wanted it to be an enchanted forest.
Concrete everywhere.
It is a small lot, but yes, it would be landscape, but right now, I was just trying to show the, the concept, uh, to see if it was acceptable to the city. Uh, the landscape plan will be submitted later.
Mimicking a pot stand cottage, including the white picket fence.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, the concept seems fine.
Thank you.
Any other, other questions on this, which was made motion by Commissioner Brunner and then by Commissioner McDonald? Are there any other comments on this item number 17? Oh, okay, yeah.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, I think this is a lovely home. Um, I have no issue with grant, with, you know, uh, granting the variances. I guess my, unfortunately, I'm gonna be a no on this, only because I just don't think that it, along Osceola, one of our major thoroughfares in Georgia, right near a new city hall, I just want a little more, um, potentially mixed use or a little more density in our urban core. Um, I think this would be a lovely home a few blocks away. Um, I just, I think it's, um, and, and anyone's gonna be very lucky to live there, what a wonderful place to live, but I just, I don't think it's in keeping with our, uh, good planning principles to put a single-family home right in the heart of our urban core. So I'm, I apologize, but, yeah, I'm gonna be a no vote on this one.
Okay, um, I was just gonna ask City Manager and Mr. La Cita who's gonna be the neighbor, if they're gonna be our neighbor first, or if we're gonna be their neighbor first, but it seems like you're, you're gonna be developing before City Hall gets going there, so.
I hope.
Yeah. Um, okay, we have a motion. Is there any other comments from us before we go to the public?
I wanted to ask a question real quick. I'm sorry, just come to my head. What is the roof and siding and all that? Is that tin or tile or what? I don't know. When it comes to roofs, I'm not very good at it.
Uh, the, the concept is.
It's got a great little cottage.
Is a metal, is a metal roof, and, um, the, the front has some brick along the porch area, the lower section?
Yes, yes, I see.
Uh, maybe if you go to my PowerPoint, it may show it a little bit more clearly.
I was just thinking of what, what, um, Mayor Meyer said, but I think it's, I think this is a, um, it's got a good look.
Well.
And I, I know you.
Well, thank you.
On what you produce.
Thank you. If you can go to, um, the inspirational pictures, a couple down there does show that, that, so, so there is a few homes, cottages that I liked.
Yeah.
You know, and when I drove around Akron and California, um, I tried to emulate those homes best I could, but this was one inspirational cottage that I saw that I liked. Go to the next one. There, there were others, and really what I see here, and it may affect your vote tonight, but is five cottages eventually along that street, uh, creating an enclave, a small enclave of single-family homes, 'cause it's all commercial, and people wanna live close to downtown.
And you're, you, that's, that's what we're go, that's what we wanna do anyway, what you're doing there.
And I agree with, you know, I agree with, uh, Mr. Meyer, that, you know, you need density downtown as well, but I think you need a little bit of both. Uh, there are a lot of people my age and older that are trying to downsize and get into smaller homes and live closer to downtown, take a golf cart. This is only a third of a mile, you could walk downtown.
Yeah.
So that's the concept, if it comes to fruition.
Oh, that's.
You know, I'd like to see it happen, there'll be five small cottages there. Madam Mayor?
I agree, I like it.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. La Cita.
Commissioner, uh, McDonald?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, you know, um, I do think it, it, it's, uh, I was actually kinda surprised when I saw it, I thought that somebody would wanna do something denser there, and, uh, but when you think about, uh, a mixed use downtown, it doesn't mean that each property necessarily is both commercial and residential. It could be commercial, residential, you know, next to each other, and there, I do hear a lot of, I'm gonna say, people my age and a little older that, uh, want to live in a, that would love to have a single-family home, uh, in the downtown area, so, uh, I think it, it does kinda fit into the, the mixed use, uh, because of where it's located at and taking into a, kind of a broad stroke, um, but it's a, but I think they're cute little houses, so. Tom, how many square feet are they gonna be?
Two thousand.
I'm sorry, keep.
If I can have a point, if I can have a point of order as well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and the deliberation is closed. If we're gonna reopen it and swear, Mr. La Cita, and start the hearing over, I'm happy to do it, but none of this testimony should be considered by the board.
Okay, okay.
I don't need to know how many square feet, I can ask him later.
Okay, it was in the plans. Thank you, Mr. La Cita. Thank you, Mr., um, miss, thank you, Mr. Mortel. I would, I, I know that the motion has been done and seconded, but staff, if you could, I know Mr. Mortel read the Resolution Number 127-2020, but if you could read your summary, Mr. Reitz, that this is what we're talking about, is this 15 feet and the parking, if you could just read that.
Mr. Reitz, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Could you just read that, that's what we're voting on?
Right, Tom Reitz, Senior Planner, for the record. Um, I will just read my, uh, staff recommendation, so if I get to it. There's three conditions of development that, uh, staff has included in the resolution, and I'll just read them real quickly. That is that the applicant, uh, get a legal description to be included, uh, a unity of title for the remainder of the north one-half lot and the existing improved parking lot on the south one-half lot for the existing building, the Dennis, or the Hair Salon that's on the south of the property, and also to get a certificate of occupancy by December 31 of 2023 for the single-family cottage home.
Thank you.
With that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
With, with conditions.
And that's what, that's what we're voting on specifically. Thank you, um, Mr. Mortel, are we, um, going with a roll call? Yes, roll call, um.
You have a roll call after public comment?
I thought we had, okay, all right, then, let's have public comment, that's right, we didn't close out. Public comment on item number 17, La Cita Cottage Home. Anybody online, Mr. Pu?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, um, City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
No.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. La Cita, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Our next item is item number 18, Savannah Place Apartments, R-PUD, minor amendment. This is a quasi judicial action, and, um, quasi, quasi, quasi. Um, so, we're gonna lean on staff here and on our commissioners. Commissioners?
Mr. Mortel, read the title.
Mr. Mortel, read the item first before.
This is Resolution Number 128-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, approving a minor amendment to the Savannah Place Apartments residential planned unit development on property located on the north side of the intersection of northeast Savannah Road and northeast Baker Road, west of the Hope Center for Autism, south of the Jensen Beach, Jensen Park Estates, both in unincorporated Martin County, thereby amending the development conditions, providing an effective date and for other purposes. And I know the board is, uh, familiar with the quasi judicial matters, and normally you anticipate there being two readings, but as a minor, I believe, and, uh, Mr. Freeman, can I correct me if I'm wrong, but as a minor, this will be the only time it's before you.
Okay. Okay, so this is a minor amendment to the Savannah Place.
I'll move for approval.
Commissioner Brunner has moved for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Seconded by Commissioner McDonald for discussion. Board, please discuss. Mr. McDonald?
I just want to understand, just to make sure what, 'cause I, I'm fine with it, but what we're doing is allowing them to buy out of the requirement.
Mr. McDonald, can I just stop you for a minute? Let me go back to my quasi judicial rules. Um, Commissioners, do you have any ex parte communications to disclose?
I have, um, I've spoken with staff, uh, and I am here with an open mind.
I have none. I think I've spoken, I've spoken with Mr. McCarthy, I've spoken with staff, and I'm here with an open mind.
I have spoken with staff, Mr. McCarthy, the attorney for, for the applicant, and I have, always have an open mind.
Uh, I spoke with, I believe, staff and, uh, Mr. McCarthy, I'm here with an open mind.
I too spoke to Mr. McCarthy, and I'm here with an open mind.
Okay, if there's anybody giving testimony, including staff, the applicant and the, the applicant's clients, please rise, raise your right hand, and be sworn in by our city attorney. City Attorney.
Are we gonna withdraw the motion and second?
I don't know.
Are we withdrawing the motion and second?
No, just in case we do have that. I had missed this whole part of it, so.
Let the record reflect, we have three people being sworn. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Yes, we went a little bit fast here.
And my only question is, I, I don't have any, I don't have any concerns, I'm, I support the motion, uh, what, my question is, I was not on the commission when the commission started putting these requirements in, so I'm just a little bit, uh, getting caught up on this, and so what we're doing, we're doing a present-day value of the cost, value of it, and then we'll take that money and we'll put it into a fund?
Madam?
Yes, I, I think it'd be a good idea to let staff present.
Let's have the staff do the, let's have staff do the.
Let's have the present.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McDonald, I know you've tried twice to go ahead, but let's pull back again. So staff, could you present any testimony that you have, your evidence and your recommendations, specifically explaining to the commission and to the public how you arrived at making this recommendation regarding, um, dealing with attainable housing or otherwise affordable housing, and what else needs to happen with this project? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, may I just, entertain me briefly, just to clarify a point?
Yes.
In Commissioner's question, this was not a requirement. This, we, we, and we don't even have a, a requirement now. This was an offer that was made by the developer. We did kind of request it of a recent PUD project, another development, but this was an offer that was made. We didn't require it, it was, it came forward from the developer.
That's why we need to hear from staff and our legal counsel. Staff, I mean, our planning staff and our legal counsel. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tom Reitz again, Senior Planner. I'll go through this pretty quickly, just to bring you up to speed. This is a minor amendment to the already-approved R-PUD, residential planned unit development. Uh, it was originally approved May 13th of, or adopted May 13th of 2019. The site is about 15 acres, uh, north of the intersection of State Road 707, Baker Road, and Savannah Place, or Savannah Road. There was originally four conditions that required, um, at that time, workforce housing, and the workforce housing was made up of 10 units, five two-bedrooms and one, I'm sorry, five two-bedrooms and five one-bedrooms. The workforce, uh, uh, housing was at 80% of the ship, uh, income levels. Um, so, yes, that's true, as, as the prior mayor noted, the applicant did approach staff and ask if this could be, um, eliminated and replaced by a condition that would allow for a one-time contribution of $252,006 into the city's attainable housing fund. Staff then, uh, took, uh, the attainable housing, housing fund, and we created it based on the net present value methodology. Um, this is a fund that is a restricted fund used to promote, plan, and fund attainable housing throughout the city based on future commission action to create that fund. Uh, Mr. Freeman is here to talk about that methodology as he worked closely with the applicant to come up with that sum.
Right. I'm gonna try and make this as simple as possible. Um, I've been, I've been doing this form of, um, evaluation for probably five years now. Um, we used it, um, to the benefit of local authorities, um, and it really, we based, um, this, we weren't expecting this to come in, the applicant approached us, uh, the attorney for the applicant came and, uh, with an offer of $200,000 for the, uh, 10 units, um, in exchange for that condition to be reworded. We counted, staff counted with a, a counteroffer based on the differential of the rent that would be collected over a period of 10 years, um, around $235,000 differential. What we hadn't run at that time was the, the net present value, um, and so the, the applicant came back and said they, they weren't happy with that, so we went and, uh, constructed So we went and constructed a calculation based on net present value. So net present value in this respect is looking at what the value would be in terms of the rent differential that would be negated by the offer of the fund. And the rent differential that we've used is around $235 per month, which is about the average differential between the ship layers of workforce and market, notwithstanding you've got different bedrooms with this. So we took an average value of about 200, sorry, yeah, $325 a month. So we put that in, and part of this calculation is not only the net present value, it's another part of this, which is called the internal rate of return. And this is a calculation that looks at what the developer would gain from removing that affordable housing commitment from that development. And we want to get, from this, from the city's point of view, we want to get to a zero net gain for the developer within the time period of about 30 years. And so we run it, and we apply an inflation rate of just over 2%, which is usually acceptable. And we come down to the fact that if a contribution for this exchange is around $252,000, then the developer does not see any substantial benefit from that for the period of 30 years. In exchange, the city does get the benefit of that sum that comes into the city's hands and is available then to use for projects throughout the city. And I know we've got an intent to move forward with some projects to increase the attainable housing in the city, and maybe look at the lower end of the market, which this development does not look at. This is looking at workforce housing. It's a fairly cumbersome set of conditions that were agreed almost virtually on the floor when this application came in. It was one of the first applications that we went through, both as staff and commission, in developing conditions to get something on for the benefit of workforce housing. And we did achieve that, and that's a credit to the city and the city commission. I, from a staff point of view, see a better benefit of having a fund set up where we can offer this type of calculation to developers and bring that to commission in exchange for attainable housing contributions when we run through the PUDs that we're likely to get in in the future. So it gives us more flexibility as a city. So have you got any questions on that? I'll be.
I have a couple of questions.
Could you wait, please? Let's just go ahead and follow the rules. So we'll just, you'll have a chance to ask staff and the petitioner at the same time. So does the petitioner have any questions with regard to the presentation that staff has made or anything that they'd like to bring to light so that our commission can discuss this matter?
Terry McCarthy, representing the applicant, I have no questions for staff. I was involved with this project originally. The buyer at the time was an office called Kennedy Homes. And as Kevin pointed out earlier, this was right about the time that we were talking about affordable, attainable housing in the city of Stewart. And I had, even before this project, had a number of conversations with Kevin about what was a private role, what was a public role. And I know that Kevin felt strongly that the public had a significant role in this and should be an active participant, but how do you achieve that? And at the time, as Commissioner Meyer correctly points out, my client contact was felt by the name of Steve Gravette. Steve was a fighter pilot in Vietnam. He had a special affinity for veterans, first responders, teachers. And he was the one that said, I'll set aside 10 units. You know, I like that concept. I'm all in. Kennedy Homes went by the wayside. The new buyer comes in and says, Mr. Somers here tonight, Michael Somers here tonight, said, look, you know, my liner's having some hiccups here, our management team is having some hiccups, because it's something that they're not used to.
Mr. McCarthy, can you direct the mic a little bit towards you?
How's that?
Move the mic. No, just pull it.
How's that? Up a little. Better? Michael came to me and said, is there any relief for that? And I said, you know, let me talk to Kevin, because I knew the way he felt about this. And I got with Kevin, and in my experience handling a number of these projects and being somewhat familiar with this affordable concept, and there's a wide spectrum of affordable housing. And I know in my dealings with the government, we're talking, generally talking about the middle or the upper middle of that component. Nobody pays much attention to this lower rung of that component. And that, in my opinion, that I think is, there's room there for government. And with this concept, that's what Kevin and I discussed, this gives, if nothing else, it gives the city a starting fund to go into some areas or just buy property, paint houses, whatever it may be. Because I've brought a number of apartment projects in front of this board, and you've had others. And I say to myself, the record-keeping on the private side's gotta be horrendous. But that's also gonna be record-keeping on the city side, to see that, you know, are those records valid? Are you doing it five years from now? Are you gonna have a person? If instead we had a similar concept, you'd have a couple million bucks right now to work with that could be used in areas that probably need it more, just a guess, probably need it more than that middle and upper middle level. So that's why, when Michael came in to see me, I thought, you know, there's, there's an opportunity here. Let me go to Kevin. That's why we find ourselves here tonight. So obviously, we support the staff recommendation. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Somers is here. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any. It's great.
Thank you. No more testimony. Your rest, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Does the city staff have any response or comments related to any questions or comments that Mr. McCarthy had? No?
No, Chair. We can make a recommendation.
None, sir? Okay. And do any of our commissioners have any questions for Mr. McCarthy?
I don't have for, Wes, you already have some for staff.
For staff? Okay.
I have a, Madam Mayor, I have a few for staff.
Okay, we're gonna go with Mr. Commissioner McDonald first, then we're gonna go with Commissioner Meyer, then we're gonna go with Commissioner Matheson.
Dave, so we need to, so this, if I understand this, the account hasn't been created yet, so we'll need to create the account and establish the rules?
So, yeah, so this item has in it the creation of the count. I spoke with.
Okay, and then we'll need to establish, at a later date, we'll establish the criteria for the use?
It's basically, I thought it was in a previous slide on there. It's pretty much basically created. You guys will decide on what the money is spent on.
Okay, that's what I mean by use.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's my, I just want to understand, because I wasn't here, and I want to figure out what exactly, make sure I understand what we're doing, because I want to make sure that, that we use the money properly. So at some point, when this money is spent, we're using it to meet the objectives of affordable housing, so. Okay, I'm good. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think this is a lot all at once. I respect the applicant's challenge now with new owner. I get that. But what we're talking about right now is, is not just a simple modification to this, to this PUD. We're also talking about the creation of an affordable housing fund, which we do not have in place. We've only recently started really trying to put some, some ideas together and some policy together around affordable housing. We, we don't have a firm funding mechanism for it. I mean, it's, I'm not totally against the idea, but I also am, I also have seen in other cases, I mean, just look at the Sadowski Fund at the state level, which is continually rated to, you know, balance budgets. I, I mean, we're a piddly little city of Stewart, and I commend us for trying to do what we can in creative ways and market-based approaches to alleviate some of the stress on our housing stock. But, you know, we're proposing to create a housing fund in our tiny city of Stewart that, I don't know, I just feel like it's, I feel like it's too much for us. We don't have any clear direction. And I would rather us have this discussion not, you know, at the, kind of coming out of a developer suggestion, which is not a bad suggestion. It's just, I, I feel like we're a little cart before the horse here. I don't even have a firm idea of what sorts of good policy and practices we would want to talk about. I mean, and I don't, I mean, are we talking about having a new impact fee? I mean, the idea of having this be a payment mechanism within a PUD process is interesting to me, but I don't really see, I mean, are we gonna require like a public art component? It's just a lot all at once, and I feel like we're jumping into this at the behest of a developer. Although it might be a good idea, I think we should be leading this conversation. And, you know, again, I understand the situation they're in. Maybe we can find another creative solution. I would like to see this built. I just, I think we're going too far too fast.
Commissioner, I mean, Mayor? Okay, Commissioner Bruner, I'll let you in before Commissioner Matheson and myself. One?
When I read that line, 250-something thousand dollars, I said, I also thought of what, what Mayor Meyer said too. Is this the Sadowski thing? But we're Little Stewart. Hope we never do anything like that. But I thought this was really a good idea, because if we were gonna start, because I've seen this, like, we're trying to get people, when they get here, to buy our rent, you know, they're gonna build. We're making them, we're not making them, they gotta do this, they gotta do that. And then telling them how much they gotta rent a building for, and I said, I thought, that's gonna be a lot of work. We have to do that? So I thought this was great. And it should stay in affordable housing. There's a couple organizations here in our town that are doing that. And I understand that it's a, isn't it a law now in the state of Florida that we can't do what we were trying to do with this property?
There's, we didn't mandate anything in this property, so we didn't violate or even address anything. And now going the opposite direction, there's no prohibition from doing that either.
No, we could have that money, and when it's time to help with one of the, well, after we talk and figure it out, maybe we'll sit down, have a workshop, and decide we want to give it to them, or we want to get half to them. Because it looks like there won't be any more of this coming in again. So I, I don't see the big deal, or, I don't. I think it's, I think it's simple.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruner. Commissioner Math, Vice Mayor Matheson, please.
So I have a few issues. I see solving attainable housing, both paths I see in my mind are correct. You know, I have to keep in mind that, yes, the applicant, or the prior applicant, suggested this. And this is a good model. It is only hitting that 80% of AMI. And we have another project going on in South Stewart that is gonna kind of follow this model with 20 units along this same scenario. I'm not opposed to the city accepting a buyout to remove these conditions. And I am certain that, that the new applicant did his due diligence and was aware of this condition before purchasing the property. So they have to, you know, be in favor of the buyout, obviously, since they're here. What I see dangerous is that we set a precedent for something in the PUD process where payments are made to get variances. And that, that scares me. But, you know, having a housing fund can let us hit, hit the lower range of the attainable housing, you know, that below 80%, which we've barely been able to tap into the 80% AMI. But what I don't, what really my reservations are is frankly, Kevin, I don't follow your math. I go from stretching out the rent discrepancy of $325, which is already, we have an average of the units, and stretching that out of $35,880 over the 10 years. So that gets me to, you know, $358,800. So I guess my first question is, what's the discount rate of 7%? Why is that there?
The discount rate in this respect, in terms of the, both the IRR and the MPV, is a, is a rate that you would expect to get a return from your investment. So that is really looking at the least amount of profit that the developer would be expecting to get from one of these apartments, for example. If they built it and then sold it, I'm sure they would get more than 7% profit on that. But that 7% represents an idea of the return that they would be expecting if they put their money into that apartment and sold it and expected a return. It's not a, it's not a deflationary, it's not a inflation. And it, it's within that NPV and IRR calculation.
Okay, so.
The more important number, actually on the screen, is the 2-point.
2.75%?
7.5. That shows the return based on the contribution. So it looks at the construction cost of the apartments. It bases on the contribution of $252,000. And it looks at that as an initial investment, and then it looks at what the developer would gain year-on-year from the additional differential between rent that they would get from being allowed to go to a market rate. And the return over 30 years is an annual of about 2.75, which is about inflation. And that's what you would, from a city's point of view, that's what you'd be wanting to see, that the developer is not gaining at a tremendous rate from the contribution that they're making.
So in this math, we should be adding the 2.75% on top of the $358,800?
No.
Are we subtracting it? If I subtract.
That's a result of a calculation. So the 2.75 is looking at the amount of revenue that the developer is getting from year one through year 30, based on the additional rent that they are getting in not having to, in being allowed to rent their property at full market value. So they're gaining from that. They're gaining revenue. What the city does not want to see is that gain really be achieved in a low rate of years or at a higher interest or higher inflation rate. So that, that number is not input by staff. That number is a result of a calculation of the return of that revenue over 30 years to the developer. And they're achieving about the same rate as they would get if they had that money and it was inflated at 2.75%.
Is it safe to say they'd gain an extra $35,880 a year if we remove these conditions?
In, not in.
In additional revenue, because they can have market rate rent.
Yeah, not in today's value of dollars.
No, he's, actually, Kevin, he's correct. The first year, they would get $35,000. They just don't get all of the 20 years' worth of 35. They only get 35 a year, so they don't get the whole amount.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it said 235.
So, you know, I would stretch that over the 10 years, roughly $350,000.
And that would just be, yeah, that would be straight math. So if you wanted to apply straight math, then that's what you would get. If you want to take account of.
The concept of present value is they don't get $358,000 this year. So instead, they give the city $252,000. In theory, the city could put it into a CD or an investment account, and with. In theory, the city could put it into a CD or an investment account, and with its 7% return, as Kevin used, it would turn into $358,000 over 10 years. But he did it all the way out to 30 years, but still, on a more fundamental level, that's the presentation.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, you know, just like any retirement. If you put $10,000 in your bank account when you're 18, in theory, it's not 10,000 when you're 65. It accumulates with compounding interest.
The city's getting the benefit of the wholesome at year one, not waiting to year 30.
Kind of like winning the lottery and taking the lump sum.
So you're taking the 252 and amortizing it with a 2%...
Yes.
2.7% increase rate over the 10 years.
That should come out to the...
To $358,000, roughly.
Roughly. This is an Excel calculation, so I just rely on putting the base numbers in and letting it run.
I mean, that's, that's my main hesitation, is why is it not $300,000? You know...
It is $300,000, it's just the present day value, the $350,000 getting it over 10 years.
It seems that there's a lot of just averages and roughness to this, but...
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yes.
You have to allow him to testify in light of the fact that you took testimony from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel.
Yes, sir, please come on.
He's been sworn in already, and we're trying, he's trying to rebut something.
Good evening. My name's Michael Summers. I represent Grand Peaks Properties. I've worked with the company nearly six years, running our Florida operation. I've been in the apartment industry 16 years.
Could you come closer, please, sir?
Yes, I apologize. I'm sorry for standing back, trying to be appropriate protocol. So first off, I really appreciate, Kevin, the staff's feedback and dialogue we've had. For the past 12 years, I've gone back to my alma mater at the University of Miami and taught real estate finance courses there. So I very much appreciated a finance discussion versus having politics or what is achievable or not within the project budget. The second thing I come here to say is, last week, my daughter came in my room, where I've been using, put my Wi-Fi's bedroom as her office for the past eight months, and said, "Your desk is really messy. You need to be cleaner." I said, "Well, I have to get out of preschool each day, come upstairs with a folder, and let's try to organize the files." So last Friday, she came in, and I was like, "We got to organize the files," and I was putting this in there. And I thought it was actually incredibly charming and simple that I could explain to my four-and-a-half-year-old daughter that I was, she was, I wasn't going to put her to bed Monday night, because I was working to try to deliver to your city $252,000 for you guys to be able to directly invest in giving people better quality housing here in your city. I will say, from Grand Peaks' perspective, we've closed on this site with the ordinance in place on the 2nd of December, with every intention of building this property and breaking ground in the next six to nine months. We are actively designing the project right now. We will share with Kev. We are keeping within every other requirement of that ordinance. Every person working for us knows we are not violating anything within that, within anything more than a tiny administrative margin to shrink or grow a garage. We found out the garages could be a little bit wider, so that an SUV fits in it better without losing a single parking space. So this is the only issue we're coming before your commission to ask for. And as a company, we've developed probably 1,500 apartments in Denver, Colorado, the past 10 years. We've developed apartments in Portland, Oregon. I've worked to buy and renovate 2,000 apartments down here the past five years. That goes from everything from $1,000 a month studios in West Palm Beach to three-bedroom townhouses in Plantation, Florida. All I've worked in is the multifamily industry. So what I'm telling you is more than just voting on accepting $252,000 from us at CO of the building. So before anybody moves into the building, this money will be delivered to the city. So the purity of that is quite certain, not to mention the ancillary benefits of working through this with you guys. Our hope is that we're on the tax rolls with a fully finished building before the end of 2022, and there becomes a flow of hundreds of thousands of dollars, well over half million dollars, into the community that this project is going to help. I'm also passionate about the environmental components of the project. When we bought the land, we knew we were signing up for much more than what we were just doing. We were preserving probably 20% to 30% of the site with native plants on the northern part of the site. We're going to help the Haney Creek area with more capital. We're going to improve the road access here. So I think in totality, we're offering a great deal of everything that has been requested, and we're simply asking so that as we're going out and talking to lenders right now, as our property managers managing the building, that there's just one less restriction, though we're offering you guys $252,000 that you guys are able to use in your community, along with the other impacts that we're going to make financially to the neighborhood through construction and coming on the tax rolls with you guys. Happy to answer any questions about myself or our vision for the area, but quite happy to be here with you tonight.
And I'm not recommending this, but it is at the pleasure of this board. You could waive the affordable housing without getting any payment at all. The board could waive the requirement. So it's not that it's a mandatory math formula.
Would you accept $300,000?
I had worked with your staff, and we had come to the conclusion of $252,000.
And I already made, we've already got a motion and a second, I think.
Okay, I haven't made any comments yet, but thank you for your comments.
I appreciate the back and forth with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I'd like to make some comments now as a member of the board, and I hope that we have all our comments in. My questions are going to be leaning more on Mr. Freeman and Mr....
Reeve.
Mr. Mortel.
Mortel.
So my question, and I've talked to Mr. McCarthy openly, my question is, is why? And where is Jolie Boglioli, our finance person? And where's Mike Mortel? Mr. Mortel, just let me just make more comments? Okay. It's just about the money, because Jolie accepts the money, that's all. It's not a big deal. So when Kennedy Holmes had this agreement, which is, we've seen the signed agreement before, the ordinance before, now we're trying to eliminate items 35 through 39 by getting this calculation done and saying this would be what would be the average value to put in 10 affordable units in there, that would be it. I'm asking you, Mr. Mortel specifically, and I'm going to pretend that I'm in court. So basically, I admit in part and I deny in part, which is what is happening here with some of our commissioners. We agree that something needs to be done, but I think that there's, I agree with Commissioner Meyer, that even though, as discussed with Mr. McCarthy, this is a good idea, and this is a good thing, to have money in a bank somewhere, bank it for affordable housing in the future. Mr. Mortel, I'm trying to find out, when we eliminate these clauses with regard to affordable housing in the prior agreement and substitute this new agreement, this 12820, just that one line at the very beginning of 12820 talks about the money and the substitution. It doesn't even really talk about the money. I'm asking you, is that sufficient for this project, as well as for other projects that are coming in, that we can say, this is a plan that we have, this is a way that we deal with banking some money for affordable housing if you're doing a project? Because I don't think we have the rules that says somebody has to do it, and because this group had agreed to do it before, now this new group is trying to change it. Like Commissioner Meyer says, where are our rules and guidelines? And maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's something that Mr. Friedman can give me, but I'm trying to find out what happens. And then, when Mr. Boglioli gets this money, just this one little note in this ordinance, Mr. Mortel, is that enough to say that we now have an ordinance that fully accepts funds for affordable housing? Or is it just tied to this one particular project? And I'm just trying to figure out how we deal with this. And if I'm thinking incorrectly, just let me know. But I'm just trying, because I know that they're not mandated per se. We don't have a mandate on this whole thing. And then the other thing is the state definition of attainable and affordable housing, and the changes that have happened, and what is what, and how do we define it? So I just, I really want to just find out, because I think Commissioner Meyer did ask that question, and I just want to...
Okay, well, if I can, if I can start at the attainable. I don't care what the state's definition is or not. In this particular case, it's defined by the PUD, has nothing to do with state regulations and nothing to do with city code. This PUD is what defined those 10 units, and that's where we start from.
Right.
Then there was a presumption that there was a $325 increase in range. If we took $500, of course, the number would be different, but it's, 325 is a presumption. You also have to estimate the interest rate return, and that happens as well. As it relates to what we do with this money, you're absolutely right, and I think Commissioner Meyer was correct in saying that there isn't a lot of information as it relates to this fund or what happens to the money. The good news is that, as a result, no one can spend $1 of it until this commission takes further action as to how to spend the money. And if you guys want to have an extravagant ordinance that discusses how you get to spend the money, you're welcome to do that. Or if you want it to be more liberal in nature, in a sense, by accepting it this way, there's no restrictions on the commission. This agreement doesn't limit you to having to build affordable housing within 100 yards of this building or something of that effect. And then, finally, as it relates to whether you would do it or not, it's a money thing, and that's your discretion one way or the other, but one of the counterbalances to it is, let's assume that you mandated them to the 10 units being affordable housing. You have absolutely no way of knowing whether that would benefit city residents or not, because it could be that 10 people from Miami move up here and enjoy the affordable housing because they qualify, and the city residents that have been here for their whole life don't get any benefit from that incentive whatsoever. If you put the money in your bank account and the city commission controls the money, you can earmark it, and you can put it exactly in your community where you think that money is needed most. So the communities that do the fund do it because they can control the money, and there is an advantage to that, but there's some complicated scenarios in mandating developers to give you the money. This happens to be a random stroke of luck that these guys have come back and that this happened, so it's now a question to you to agree if this payment is adequate.
Yes, and like I said, items number 35 through 39 being struck, and to have the specific words, as the developer just stated, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for this development, and in lieu of providing 10 workforce housing units, the developer shall contribute a sum of $252,606 into the city's attainable housing fund. And the reason why I said, where is Jolie, Mr. Boglioli tonight, or his representative from his department, is, Mr. Mortel, you're saying that that's fine. If the developer, just like they'd pay for tree mitigation or for anything else, the fund stays there. The city commission will be able to go back to this fund and say, we have X amount of fund. So if a group like Mr. Blunt's group or some other group in the future is doing something, and there's a need to assist with affordable or attainable housing, we can say the city has funds that maybe they can work with and partner with. How would that work? Is that, I'm asking?
Well, this is a single PUD that's already approved. We can extort money from Mr. Blunt next month.
No, I'm saying that if they want to, well, if we want to assist with affordable housing in the future, and this money sitting there...
If that's what you guys direct staff or direct the finance director to do with the money, you could in fact address it or use it to fund something like that.
Again, it's very simple, and I feel like if you didn't do your homework, you should have done your homework.
No, we have, we've done our homework, it's just that...
I have made a motion, and I think we had a second.
I hear you, but I just want to make sure that when we do this, Mr. Mortel and with our staff, that we're clear how we're treating Mr. McCarthy and his client, so that he knows he's happy when he goes away from here, and...
I don't want to treat him any worse than we already have.
No, we're good, we're good. Just trying to make sure.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Mortel, are we okay?
You don't need to worry about the funding and the expense. What this item does is it creates a restricted fund that I can't touch to balance the budget. You guys have to approve it, very similar to the tree fund. Those restricted funds will stay in place until an item comes before you and at your will to expend them. What you need to consider is, do you agree with the amount of money, and do you agree with the philosophy?
Yes, and we've looked at the amount of money, and Mr. Matheson has done, gone over it again, and I've looked at that formula, as well as what staff has shown, how they've come up with it. I just want to make sure that when we make this decision, that we're airtight. So Commissioner Brunner has made a motion, and I think Commissioner McDonald has seconded it, is that correct?
Yes.
And we've had discussion, ample discussion and presentation from staff and from the applicant. Are there any other comments from our board members? Okay, do we go to the public now, Mr. Mortel?
Yes, ma'am.
Any comments from the public on item number 18? We have Lindsey Campbell.
Actually, I just like to talk, I have a question for answer.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Appreciate it. And we have Ms. Madeline Greenwood.
Thank you, Madeline Greenwood with Housing Solutions Council, and I do like the proposal to, well, the mention of Housing Solutions Council. Because it's for rental units, and I would like to say, if we're going to vote this way, that it's something that goes towards attainable housing, that it be for rental properties, because that's the issue we're having in our community right now, is there's a lack of attainable rental units for that 51% to 80% area median income, which is the low to moderate income. We do have rental units for, although there's not sufficient amount for people that are in the low and extremely low, which is below the 50%. But we know this is an issue, it's something that we're working on, we're trying to build, and we would love to take that money, but it's a good use. But I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I really hope that's something that we could actually put one little caveat on there, for it to be for rental housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greenwood. Is there any other comment? Are there any comments on the Zoom line? By telephone or by Zoom?
Is there another green card up there, Madam Mayor?
It's item number 20, the next item. Is there anyone else here who think that they may have given me a green card, and I've forgotten them? Thank you. We have the pleasure of making our final vote by the clerk, making, let me see if there's anything in our cause adjudicial, Mr. Mortel? Nothing else? We are going to close this hearing with all the evidence being closed, and we are going to...
Just direct the clerk to take the...
Close our deliberation.
Just direct the clerk to take the vote.
Yes, she's going to take the vote now.
Okay. Commissioner Meyer?
No.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matheson?
No.
Mayor Meyer? I'm sorry, Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Abbott. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. McCarthy.
Merry Christmas.
We go on to item number 19, the update on the Community Investment Program, the CIP.
Move for approval.
Check it.
Moved by Commissioner Mathes...
McDonald.
McDonald, and seconded by Commissioner Brunner.
Madam Mayor, I have...
Do we have any questions?
I have a, just a small question. Well, also, I want to acknowledge, thank you to staff. I'm sorry for the thorough grilling last time around, but I appreciate seeing all of these numbers. For Mr. Dias, in years two and three on this updated CIP for the Public Works Complex, I just wanted to have a discussion, this is assuming that we're doing the full move, yes?
Correct.
Okay. And I know that we can continue to discuss this in future, but...
I'm sorry, it'll probably be a, at least a one-year pushback. We've had discussions about not moving forward that until after our next rate study, so we can determine if the increased amount of the cost to build is something the commission wants to move forward on.
Oh, great, okay. That's just, I was making sure, because I was not sure that I'm ready to move forward on that myself. That's it for me. Madam Mayor.
Anyone else on the commission have any comments on item number 19?
No comments.
Any comments from the public on item number 19, in person or in Zoom? There are no further questions? Would you please call the roll?
If I could read the ordinance, it's ordinance number 2458-2020, in order to the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, amending the city's comprehensive plan to update the five-year community investment program, included with the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal of laws in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Madam Clark?
Thank you. Madam Clark?
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matheson?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item is the EAR report... Next item is the EAR report, ordinance number 2442-2020. Mr. Mortel?
I move for.
Can he read the ordinance first, please?
This is ordinance 2442-2020, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, adopting the evaluation and appraisal report here for the comprehensive plan of the City of Stewart, stating the intent of the City Commission to amend the comprehensive plan based upon recommendations contained in the report, and approving transmittal of the evaluation and appraisal report to the Department of Economic Opportunity and any other interested governmental entity, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve this with extra, with an edit. Is that, may I do that?
Yeah, I mean, you just include the edit.
Wait, are you going to get a second, and then you can do your edit?
No, what's the edit? Perhaps we should hear staff's report.
I'm trying to jump ahead of another motion to approve as is.
Let's hear staff report before we make an.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, let's do staff's report.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, this is Stephen Mayer for the Record Development Department. I'll try to make this brief. We had a, this is a second reading of our D, of our EAR, Evaluation Appraisal Report. We had received DEO recommendations, and we have also worked with DEO on their comment on our affordable housing definitions, and what you see before, what you see in your agenda is a result of the conversations we had with DEO on rectifying the affordable housing definitions, but also adding our own definition of attainable housings, and we can use those in our policies. So we have, in many of the cases, it says affordable housing or attainable housing. That is one of the issues, the second one of the issues, which was a comment, was actually satisfied in the previous addenda item, which is the CEIE, which we have now updated and will be sending with the EAR as well. The final item, which I think is probably, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is probably what we were trying to, going to have a correction to, is regarding to the wetlands buffer in our comp plan. We had come across, staff had come across a reason to try to amend what we had previously previously approved on transmittal, and it's regarding the wetlands in our creeks. Established in a surficial aquifer system consumption use permit for South Florida Water Management District, category one of wetlands were established regarding all of our creeks, being Fraser Creek, Popleton Creek, and Kruger Creek. And what that does, in essence, is that it makes it mandatory to have at least a 50-foot average buffer from the wetlands on every property, including these single-family properties along the creek, and without a redress in our code to be able to vary that, because the comp plan cannot be varied, only our LDRs could. So having that in our comp plan, having the 50-foot average buffer with a minimum of 25, means that these properties, many of which would be severely impacted. You could see that these properties have residential, for the most part, existing, but some vacant as well. So what staff recommends is that we keep the, the buffer shall be maintained for a minimum average width of 50 feet and a minimum width of 25 feet. We should keep that as our standard buffers, but add a third subparagraph, which states that any parcel which has frontage on a tidal creek such as Kruger, Popleton, Fraser, shall be exempt from policy CI of this plan. Such parcels shall provide a wetland buffer of 10 feet within the CRA and 25 feet in other locations beyond the perimeter of the wetland. This is actually different from what you see on the agenda. Staff had kind of, after the agenda, readdressed the situation, the recommendation, and we now recommend this language, which would get to a better point than providing the PCN numbers of the individual parcels. We are open to your deliberation on that recommendation.
Thank you. As a matter of point of order, when you made those changes by staff, have you contacted the the property owners who may be affected?
We have not contacted property owners.
This is a general law in its comp plan, so there's no direct contact of any property.
Okay, so I just, well, actually, I was just thinking of the property owner who is here tonight, but that's okay.
Right, we believe that that would address his, his property concerns, that this language still would address the property concerns.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move approval with, with still yet an edit, from what staff has recommended here with their second edit. I would recommend approval of the language, the updated language in blue, shall maintain, well, with a scribbler's error removed, shall be a minimum average width of 50 and a minimum width of 25, and strike III. I have grave concerns about us exempting certain sections in our comp plan. And the reason I say to just have the edits in I be, and those, I think those will cover any interested parties, because that makes our comp plan consistent with our LDRs, and that has been the main problem that we have had, is that the comp plan and the LDRs are in conflict. Our LDRs say average width of 50, minimum 25. Our comp plan currently says minimum 50. We have been, we have been in good planning principles with certain cases, following the LDR path, to have some that follow average 50, minimum 25, and there is yet still another pathway to vary from that with the Board of Adjustment, get grant, being granted a variance, and properties along these waterways have done so.
The Board of Adjustment can't grant a variance in violation of the comp plan. I mean, just so we're clear, the Board of Adjustment, you can deviate from the LDR by Board of Adjustment or PUD as long as you don't violate the comp plan. So before, when it was an average or whatever it was, you could have zero and 100, and that's still an average of 50, and that's where the LDRs were. But I agree with you, Commissioner Meyer, that there were Board of Adjustment hearings in the early 2000s, thousands that approved properties on that Popleton Creek that clearly did not have a 50-foot average buffer from the wetland. I don't know that we would get that, that would make it through review today.
Okay, I appreciate that, and if that's the case, what I would like to make firmly sure of, if this, if III is here to protect us in case of what Mr. Mortel has said, are we sure that the parcels that have already been developed on Popleton Creek and Kruger Creek and Fraser Creek do indeed have a wetland buffer of at least 10 feet? I don't believe they do, and so are we still going to be in violation of the comp plan?
The majority of them do, the majority of them do.
Okay, let's just have one person, you responding?
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Mayor?
Hold on, let me see what the, to the attorney.
Madam Mayor, can, can staff answer?
I don't, I agree with.
Can staff answer my question?
Comments, I don't have any.
I don't, I don't know if we can, because there's properties, I know of one property on Fraser Creek, because my wife's father built it, that probably doesn't have 10 feet, but it was built in 1963, so, and same with, I think, some, some other properties, so there probably wasn't even a comp plan, in fact, I know there wasn't a comp plan when those were done, so.
The concern, the concern there, though, is that, the issue is persistent nonconformity. So in the case where that house that was built before the comp plan, it needs to be, well, somebody buys it, knocks it down, and wants to rebuild.
Then it becomes, it's a nonconforming use, so.
Right, so that, I, the, the problem is that, I don't know, I just don't think that we, I don't want to give away too much by exempting.
But also, I don't want to take, you know, effectively, my concern is, I like this language, because my concern is, there's folks that own property, for example, in fact, one of them's here, or owns property in Indian Groves, bought the property in 2005, has letters from the city saying that he can build what he wants, and then all of a sudden he can't, and.
As a clarification, I read the letter, and it was a zoning letter that basically said it was R1. It didn't, it didn't, it said it was residential, it wasn't commercial. It did not say anything, it actually provided the buffers. The other thing you have to ask yourself is, if you guys did nothing, let's say you didn't amend this recommendation at all, as I pointed out to Commissioner Meyer a minute ago, I don't know that those original approvals would make it through approval now. I think if that property came before us under this code with an average of 50 feet, which is what it says, and no minimum, could be a minimum of zero, but you have to have an average of 50 feet, I think they'd have a problem.
But, Mr. Mortel, if we were to change the comp plan to have it, say, minimum average 50, minimum 25, we still can't go through the Board of Adjustment for a variance.
Correct, well, you can go through the Board of Adjustment, but now you have to have a minimum of 25, and an average of 50.
Well, we currently have a minimum of 50, that's what it says now.
I thought it was an average.
No, let's read the comp plan as it is right now on Unicode. It says buffers shall be a minimum of 50, period. That's what it says, that's what the comp plan says, today. So.
By the way, what I was saying is even, yours is obviously more strict, I was saying regardless.
Look it up, everybody look it up, that's what it says. So what we're proposing to do is to make the comp plan in concert with the LDRs, because the LDRs say that, say minimum average 50, average 50, minimum 25. But the comp plan today, right now, says 50.
He's working on it.
You are correct.
Is.
I think that's correct.
I have a question for staff, is, is Popleton Creek in the CRA?
No, that would not be in the CRA, but those other creeks, some of those other creeks are. It was a, it's generalized so that it'd be 10 feet within the CRA, independent of what creek it's on.
So properties along Popleton Creek would still need to maintain a minimum of 25-feet wetland buffer?
From a delineated wetland line. The issue that we face with the categorization of the creeks as category-one wetlands is you, you're starting the line at somebody's seawall, in effect. If people have seawall, then you're talking, you're saying that's going to be adjacent to a wetland, so you're moving 50 feet back from that. So that's what this, the issues we have, and in the CRA specifically, we have properties developed onto the seawall or the top of bank, and they've used the CRA setback of 10 feet, which is another requirement or another, yeah, requirement in the comprehensive plan, that those are 10 feet in the CRA and 25 feet outside of the CRA. So we're trying to, with the language here, we're trying to reflect another part of the comprehensive plan, which also uses those numbers for upland buffers.
But the proposed language of III would mean any properties along Popleton Creek that are not in the CRA, some of those are already developed and within that 25-foot wetland area.
Yes, they could very well be, but they're certainly in the 50 feet.
They'd be nonconforming.
They'd be nonconforming, though, because they're not in the CRA, they wouldn't have that 10-foot measurement, they'd have to stay with 25 feet away from the wetland.
Yes, even with this.
Some of the undeveloped properties would be undevelopable, and some of those that are developed would be nonconforming.
Yes, it's almost impossible to come up with a solution that fit everything.
And let me ask you, Mr. Freeman, when they come in to define and totally delineate that wetland, they will provide a study when they come in for that single-family home?
Yes.
And map it out?
There'll be a delineated.
The plant, the plant and, and everything in there, so that we know what the wetland area is, solid survey and everything.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, can I request, can I have, can staff return their proposed language so I can read it one more time?
Yes, sir, I just.
You're going to put and in there?
And I just wanted to show you what the, what it currently says in our comp plan, buffers shall be a minimum width of 50 feet is, because is correct. And then I'll put up the language.
That one there, maintain and.
Okay, so, minimum of 10, minimum of 10 in the CRA or 25 in any other location? Okay, so, let's just, let's work this out. Kruger Creek, Popleton Creek, Fraser Creek, parcels that are already developed, if they are within those setbacks, are currently nonconforming, and would need to be rebuilt to be conforming.
They would be grandfathered in.
If they.
Somebody tore it down, or if they had more than 50% of the value as an improvement, they would be no longer compliant.
Yes, that's what I meant to say, okay. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Now, for those parcels that are not currently developed, are we satisfied that 10 feet, are, is 10 feet enough?
In the CRA, I'm fine with that.
Yes, in the CRA, outside the CRA, 25.
Where did 10 feet come from?
That's the CRA upland buff, uplift.
It's current code, yeah, it's waterfront current code.
Waterfront current code.
The, yeah, the comprehensive plan has a vegetation buffer zone of 10 feet within the CRA and 25 feet outside the CRA on our bodies of water.
So we're basically saying here that we're treating these category-one wetlands that the Water Management District is classifying as waterfront, and we're following the same there.
That's correct.
Kevin, how many parcels are affected, undeveloped?
Undeveloped?
That's a good question, probably not many.
Under.
Three?
Under a dozen.
Yeah, so it's not even that many parcels.
All right.
The original, Madam Mayor, the original intent was to, was to provide some relief for single-family homes, which I am open to. I also want to be careful that, and in the original language, actually, the proposed first original language edit was that they specifically said, "single-family homes." I know that on, while on Fraser, but also on Popleton, across on the east side of Canner is a large commercial parcel, it's in red, right there, that little blip of red, below Vias or Trestler Alonita, yeah, where the chiropractic office is now. So this would also be included in that, and, you know, again, like, I'm all for us, you know, utilizing our urban core, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have obstacles to building, but I just don't, I'm afraid of the unintended consequences of this. I don't want to disturb, inordinately disturb a prime wetland, even though we consider it waterfront, the Water Management District says it's a prime wetland, you know, for a commercial development. Can we, can we specify in III that it would be for, for residential types? Is that possible?
Single-family residential?
Well, here's another trick, obviously, I've spent a lot of time on this. Currently, the parcels on the north side of Indian Groves are R3, and although a single-family can be built in R3, they're currently multifamily. So the future land use is low, low-density residential, but the zoning is R3. I don't know, maybe I'm taking this too far out, I just, I, I, I want us to.
I like the language of single-family residential nonetheless.
Mike, is there any problem with single-family residential for that, or is that too?
Is that, is that a meaningful, is that enforceable, Mr. Freeman or Mr. Mayor? I mean, if there's no zoning to reflect, can we just say a single-family structure?
But in the case of that, that commercial property that you pointed out, I, I don't, I don't know if it meets 75 feet or, which would be the LDR, but 50 feet average, which would be the comp plan now. And we would not have any way, even a PUD, to vary from that 50 feet.
Okay.
At all, and so I'm just.
Because it's out of the CRA?
That is out of the CRA, that's correct.
That's, that's actually a pretty old building.
So that's out of the CRA, but Indian Groves, is that, that's in the CRA?
This is not within the CRA.
So the Indian Groves property with this proposed edit still has a 25-foot?
That's right.
25-foot and a minimum of 50, which means it's.
Minimum average of 50.
Right, but it means it's probably not going to be buildable.
Oh, wait, no, is that what the? Oh, wait, no, is that what the, is that what the?
They make it exempt with I I I.
Well, yeah, with I I I, that's, I'm, I'm focused on I I I, because I think we need, for one, we do have, we've been working a lot on multifamily housing.
Right.
I don't want to take any single-family lots off, off the ability to build, because there, there is a definite.
Just so I can be clear, what we're doing is not ta, is not.
It doesn't take it off, but.
Diminishing the value of any single-family lots. If anything, we're being more liberal with the code.
I know, I'm talking with the I I I. I'm talking if we don't.
Already not buildable.
Right, well, I think that.
All right, I'm ready to make a motion of approval on this. I'm back right where I started. Motion of approval?
Second.
So we're approving staff's recommendation here?
What are you recommending?
As written with the I I I?
Yes.
As written with added single-family residential?
Is that correct, Commissioner Brunner and Commissioner McDonald?
I'm going back to at the beginning and make a motion on two four five eight dash 2020.
Okay, as staff recommendation.
As the staff, right, as staff recommendation.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Yes.
Died for lack of second.
What they have recommended.
Thanks, Mary.
Hold on. The clerk said that there was a motion by Commissioner Meyer previously.
It died for lack of second.
Just for the record, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Because you wanted to make an amended change, right? But staff has shown us what their amended changes, and Commissioner Brunner has moved to accept the staff recommended changes.
May I, may I petition the motioner? Because I think we still have a problem here.
I'll listen.
Could, may, may I ask that the motioner revise her motion such that we, so I I I, it reads, "any parcel which has a frontage on a tidal creek", I don't, I, I think that might be too general. I think we need to say category, South Florida Water Management District, category one.
Nope, I'm leaving my motion as is.
But I'm, I, all I'm saying, Commissioner, is that this actually makes, this will make, to continue to make this lot that we're all talking about unbuildable. As it, as it is now.
Well, it'll just have to be 25 feet from the wetland.
Well, 25 feet from the wetland, and there are other ways that somebody could build on a piece that we could vary setbacks or something in the front of the property. I don't know, I just.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Mayor, the, the, the staff member, is this, what you've recommended to us and what is being proposed by our two commissioners for adoption, is that in keeping with what we need to do for this area, as well as what may be potentially the development of a single-family property along the Popleton Creek area? Would this be able to facilitate it if we approve these changes today?
Yes, this would facilitate the development of the vacant parcels. Subsequently, the 25 feet was something that the applicant before you, for the next B O A, had mentioned that 25 is something that they could do.
As long as the configuration of their delineated wetland will allow them to get that 25 feet.
If I can note for the commission, this is not a development order. This is an year amendment.
Yes.
And therefore, we should not be considering a single individual's property. It should be addressed as a year amendment.
But the, the general policy is that if any individual comes in along Popleton Creek, they have to meet that 25 feet. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brunner and Commissioner McDonald.
You're welcome.
Clerk, no, sorry. Is there any member of the public? We have Mr. Bornik, item number 20.
Just quickly, Madam Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to compliment the staff. They've been tremendous. They've been professional, meeting with me on this issue and multiple, multiple meetings. And to get to this point, I greatly appreciate how professional and wonderful they've been to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, any other comments? Or there, is anyone on Zoom? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matheson?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Mortel, we did read the, the ordinance. Okay, thank you. The next one is ordinance number 2456-dash-2020 and item number 21, Wreckers and Vehicle Vessel Towing Amendment.
Move for approval.
This is an ordinance of the City of Stewart, Florida.
Could you have the ordinance read? Thank you, Mr. Mortel.
Amending the Stewart Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Business, Article 6, Wreckers and Vehicle Towing to be in accordance with the Florida statute, Florida State Statute for repeal of conflicting ordinance, providing for severability, providing classification, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Mr. Mortel, Mr. Commissioner McDonald made a motion.
Commissioner McDonald's motion.
Second by Commissioner Meyer. Are there any comments from our commission on item number 21?
No changes from first reading.
No changes for first reading. Are there any comments from members of the public, whether in person or online? Hearing none. City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Mr. Mortel, item number 22, could you please reset that for us?
This is ordinance number two four five seven dash 2020. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, rezoning the 1.36-acre parcel from residential multifamily office to residential planned unit development located north of the Ark of Martin County and south of the estates of Stewart, east of Canor Highway, said land being more fully described in Exhibit A attached, establishing the hidden key R P U D, consisting of 28 multifamily units within a two-story apartment building, approving a development site plan, providing for development conditions, and a timetable for development, declaring the plan to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, providing direction, City Clerk, providing repeal of all ordinance in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Madam Mayor, I'm moved that we continue this to the date certain of January 11, 2021.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk? Are we just have all in? Is it okay to do all in?
All in favor.
All, all in favor of rescheduling this item?
Aye.
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 Colleagues, we're still in the meeting. Come on.
I know that it's been a tough day.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Prior to adjourning, prior to adjourning, I would just like to make a statement that while I appreciate the fast motions, especially on second readings where there are no changes, we need to be cautious about first readings and commission actions of one reading, especially where they're quasi-divisional, to hear the presentation and especially receive evidence for future approving of cases.
And Madam Mayor, I would just like to say, I know we talked a lot on item number 20 about a specific parcel, and I just want to clarify to Mr. Mortel's point that at least I can speak for myself, I was, you know, I'm not trying to write comp plan language or code to benefit one particular property owner. However, it is important to see how, how the property challenges we see in the city ought to be addressed by a complex.
And I agree with your position. That's why I didn't say anything at the very end, because at the end it started going toward that.
Yeah, I know. I wanted to just clarify that. For illustrative purposes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And thank you, everyone. Thank you. I'm sorry that it went on so long. Thank you, Ms. Brunner.
Motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas.
We, we adjourned. I agree with that motion.
We should do that again tomorrow.